I'd like to call to order the City of Sonoma Special Planning Commission meeting on Monday, February 25, 2019. And with that, I'll have a call to order, please.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Willander.
Here.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
And Chair Felder.
Here. And with that, I will ask Commissioner O'Neil if she will leave some pledge, please.
First of all, no new items will be heard by the Planning Commission after 10:30 unless commissioned by majority vote specifically decides to continue. I would ask everyone that has cellphones to please play it, place them in silent mode so that they don't interrupt the meeting. Any decision reached by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council. Appeals must be filed with the City Clerk within 15 calendar days following the Planning Commission decision. And I think that's it. The next item is review and acceptance of agenda. Would anybody like to change the order of the agenda or anything?
I would. I would like to make a motion that we move item 4.1 down the agenda just prior to item And I would also like to make a motion that we move item 8, comments from the Commission, up before the item 4.1, which if approved will be right before item 5.2. And so it would go 5.1, item 8, 4.1, 5.2. Does that make sense? And the reason why, in case anyone is wondering, is I have to recuse myself from item 5.2. So item 4.1 is obviously associated with item 5.2, and I would like to make some Commissioner comments and would not like to wait in the lobby for the entirety of item 5.2.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Before we take a vote, go out as a public, does the public have any comment on that motion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission and roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Hi.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Willander.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Yes.
And Chair Felder.
Yes.
Motion was approved unanimously, six to zero.
Okay, then we are going to go to, you moved correspondence down ahead of 5:2, didn't you? So we're going to 5:1 right now? That's what I've got is a motion. All right, we, item 5.1 is a public hearing for the consideration possible adoption of a resolution of the Planning Commission of City Sonoma recommending an ordinance to the City Council amending Title 19 of the Municipal Code to establish new regulations for wine tasting facilities, wine bars, and taprooms. With that, I will turn it over to the Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, David Store, Director, I just have a brief PowerPoint presentation. I won't go through all of the details that are in your packet, but I will tell you that some of the guiding direction that we have preceded my arrival here. And so just a very brief five or six slides on the PowerPoint, and then I can get into some, just some brief components of what the ordinance does show that we have before you tonight in draft form. So you may recall that there has been a moratorium on wine tasting facilities in the city in the Prodd area, and we'll talk about geography a little bit later on, since December of 2017, and through a series of extensions, the City Council has extended it until May 1st of this year. The goal tonight would be to have your Commission provide a recommendation on a proposed ordinance so that the Council could first introduce the reading on March the 18th, and then also have a second reading conducted on April the 1st. And then 30 days after that second reading will become effective, which would actually coincide with May the 1st. So that's the goal, the intent tonight. I will remind the Commission of a prior Commission composition, that your Commission did review some concepts of wine tasting restrictions and limitations within the city. As far as the minutes show and the record shows that there was actually no motion made by the Commission. Individual comments were made, and those were passed along to the City Council through some of their deliberations. We, I believe we've had two, it may have been three meetings, I think two of the City Council wherein we, as staff, provided direction following this meeting of your Commission at the end of the year and early part this year. With respect to some of the content, there were, there was support of the Commission on a numeric limit of wine tasting facilities in the city and the provision or requirement, if you will, of a use permit structure to allow them in the future. You may recall, and this is anecdotal, that currently and before the moratorium, we had an ordinance in place that allowed wine tasting facilities as a principal permitted use in the commercial zoning district. Within the mixed-use district, there's a conditional use permit requirement for that. So on January the 14th of this year, the City Council did direct as a staff to return to the Commission with some basic provisions. Not all of them were fine and tuned. Some general direction there were that the, there would be a use permit provision, a requirement, for tasting rooms. There was a desire on the Council's part to have a number ranging between two to five lower than the actual number that was there, and we'll get into some of the numbers in a moment. And they also wanted to have a restriction on the number of wine tasting facilities per block face. And some of you may recall that the City of Hildesburgh did something similar to that with respect to their block faces. The geography of the permitting structure was not directed by the City Council, but they gave their direction. I believe a couple of them were talking about the downtown planning district. One council member talked about it being citywide and, but there was no direction to the Commission to do it. They wanted to get your taste, if you will, for lack of a better word, on what that should be, whether it made sense to do it on citywide, historic overlay, downtown planning area, or even the Prodd as it relates to the moratorium. There was also discussion regarding nonconforming uses. What happens to those existing uses today when they, with the adoption of an ordinance that requires a tasting permit? What would happen to those particular existing wine tasting facilities? And the length associated with those existing nonconforming uses such that where they were to discontinue their use, how long that would be? The Council did provide an interest in having that be set at 60 days, which is a departure from other nonconformities in your code that have a year's provision in it. So they wanted to kind of tighten up that ability to be able to have wine tasting uses become nonconforming. Again, a desire to speeden up the lessening, the lessening of the nonconformity within the city to try to make it a more conforming situation. I'm not sure if that came out quite right, but that was the intent. And so we've provided in a draft structure tonight provisions. It's not specifically an ordinance in format that we've given you tonight, but we've given you the components of what could be within an ordinance. The, and there's a couple of other components that I've got here on the screen that you can take a look at. The, there are some, so those are the things that the Council did talk about, and they also talked about a couple of other things that they weren't interested in having in the, in the ordinance or a proposed ordinance that was to return to them. Number one would be the concept of wine sourcing, and another one was with respect to the number of wine tasting facilities that could be next to one another with a, what we've called a WTUP, a whatup. And so, I'm sorry for that, that was the best thing we could come up with to resemble a conditional use permit. It's a wine tasting use permit. So should the Commission wish to add things that we haven't provided as staff, we can certainly make those recommendations on your behalf to the City Council, that they may want to consider it based on the support of the Planning Commission, if that's such of the direction. So I'm going to apologize for the graphics. I may have mentioned to you before that we had a bad situation with our computers in the last week or so. And so you have David's colorized version of the location of type 02 and 42 facilities. And what we have here is a situation where we have 26 02 licenses, and a 02 license is simply a license for a winery to have its and only its goods as a tasting facility, as opposed to a wine tasting facility that has multiple wines to taste, which would be a type 42 license. The, so we have 26 total in the area that you see within the, within the green. And you can also see there are some just very close to the green, and the reason for this diagram is to show the proximity of those red dots to the Prodd, as opposed to some of those that are outside, not only of the Prodd, but also way outside of the downtown district. And so you can see in total that we have 36 total wine tasting facilities, be they a 02 or a 42. And in the draft ordinance that we provided, we've basically structured it such that that number would be reduced to 34. So the Commission could say, well, wait a minute, that's not low enough, or we want more. And so you could provide that direction to us to communicate to the City Council, and those changes can be made tonight in the form of a recommendation. Again, apologies.
Excuse me, just let it jump in. I believe that you are recommending the number be reduced to 30.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I meant to get to the 34 and then get back down to the 30, but yes, sorry, thank you for that. And so this is a, thank you very much, I misspoke. And so you'll see that the 34, now that I think about it, is everything except for the, the blue number one to the far left of the screen, and then the, the red one to the right of the downtown district. Thank you.
Can I ask a brief question?
Sure.
The last time, this was before the Planning Commission, I believe we were just talking about limiting, potentially limiting tasting rooms within the Plaza Retail overlay. And so we're now talking about the downtown district, which on your map here, that includes areas like, you know, where Whole Foods is, down by, I mean, it's a much larger area, correct?
It is a large geographic area, and thank you for the question, because there are places that sell wine which are a type 47 license or a type 41. And the Cheese Factory, for example, is a type 41. You'll notice by this, we're dealing with just the O2s and the 42s. But yes, the geographic area, the number one in the blue that says a 42 on it, that's at 535 West Spain. So that's way out of the area, as opposed to some of these others that are close to the Prodd. And that was the point of showing you the scatter graph, if you will, is to show the proximity of the Prodd and whether what we're recommending to the City Council has any material effect on the cluster of where they're at. And so again, apologies here for the, for the diagram. I could not figure out how to get it to be the way that you can read it, but you can get the pattern, the structure of inside the Prodd and the downtown district, if you will. This particular exhibit that you have in your packet shows the, down the left side of the column there, you'll see all 26 that tie back into the chart that I provided. These are all 02s inside the Prodd, and the red color there are those that are facing the Plaza. So you can see in the second column from the left, the middle column per se, that you can see that those are inside the Prodd, but those are the type 42s. To the right column, you'll see three boxes. You'll see the outside the Prodd but inside the downtown district, and those are type 2 licenses. Again, the type 2 is the singular winery product. And then you can also see the type 42s, and then you can see those that are outside the downtown district, which is one I said at 535 West Spain, and also the 654, I think, Broadway. So you can see there that by reducing the total number from 34 of interest down by four to 30, you'll see that was the rationale that we used to make that recommendation. And that concludes Staff's presentation at this time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
This photograph of Sonoma in 2161?
Salt Lake City.
I will open it up to the Commission for questions, but before we do that, I do have a couple of things that I think we need to correct in what has been presented as the modification to the Development Code. Under item 5, the findings and decision, 5E, it's calling out the provision for the wine tasting facilities and wine bars that face the Plaza. And it lists all four faces, including First Street West, but then when it goes down to say that they're depicted in Figure A, First Street West is not included.
So Veronica caught that. So she's been drafting as we speak. We've got that modified exhibit, so yeah, I think that was not the intent to do a graphic outline.
Right. And then in item 8, under wine tasting use permit to run with the land, there's a typo there where the discontinued period is called out as 90, and then says in parentheses, 60 calendar days. There's two places that that appears. And in the second one, in the, next to the last line, I think the word days should also be inserted after calendar.
Thank you.
But other than that, do you, does anybody from the Commission have some questions before we take it to the public? Commissioner Barnett?
Along the same lines of word corrections, under Section 4, Section 199220 definitions, it's referring to taprooms in this section, and then it refers, in line 6 from the bottom of that paragraph, refers to wine, the wine tasting experience. I would assume that we would replace that with a taproom experience?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there's actually a second place where that appears in 1950, 130, under B3. The proposed use will provide a service not currently available in the area, that it will serve, or unique or unusual circumstances justify anew, and then it still says wine bar taproom. It should just say taproom.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett?
Thank you. To that point, I just want to clarify, in the original code, wine bars and taprooms were grouped. And so what we've done is separated them and provided a more, a use permit process and also a numerical limit just with wine bars, correct? And so taprooms, there is no numerical limit?
Correct.
Correct.
And a taproom is defined as?
Beer place.
Beer, or perhaps a, I mean, would a distillery, for example, if there was a whiskey tasting, is that, is that defined in our code?
It is, it isn't, and, no, it isn't, and it would be based on the definitions we currently have now treated as a bar.
A standard bar?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So taproom is literally just beer?
Correct.
With, okay.
Yeah.
And there's no numerical limit on that? Okay.
That's correct.
Other questions? Commissioner O'Neil?
Okay, I had a couple of questions on this. One related to Commissioner Kelso Barnett's question. I see some of the wine country towns have grouped the ordinance to include spirits as well as taprooms, as well as wine tasting rooms. Is that something that we would consider?
I'll have to look up to verify this, but I think that bars within this district are already conditionally permitted uses.
Okay, and in Hildesburgh, they included bars in their ordinance as well.
I don't know what Hildesburgh, whether those were allowed principally preceding their regulations, or whether they were just looking to put limitations on bars. The Council didn't, this was not an issue that came up before. Certainly, when we carry it forward to the City Council, we can ask them, did you want numerical limits on bars as well? Bars as bars are treated differently by ABC. They would have to have that use permit anyway, so it's sort of a little bit redundant, except for the numerical limitation question. Otherwise, we've already covered it in the code by having bars as a conditionally permitted use.
Okay. All right. One thing, too, I was curious about is what are the terms for losing the wine tasting use permit? I wanted to understand, besides just giving up their use permit, are there enforcement procedures that somebody could lose their use permit, such as with a vacation rental, how if you sell the property, or if you have three complaints, you can lose your vacation rental permit? Is there something in, being written in as well on that, so that if we have a problem with any particular tasting room, that we have a way to work with them to make sure that they know that we can enforce shutting them down?
I believe that's the concept of revocation, where you actually go in. In my experience, it's very rarely used as a process, but it's certainly something that we can institute. We have that in our code already.
So relative to other jurisdictions, I have no experience with revoking a use permit. Uniquely, however, we had a use permit in this jurisdiction in, I want to say, the mid 1990s. That did go before the Council, the City Council for a use permit revocation hearing, because the manner in which the business was being operated was found to constitute a public nuisance. And so that did go to hearing for revocation before the, before the city. It is done. It's done rarely, generally under the, under fairly egregious circumstances, but it can be done.
The other side to that, Veronica's talking about, is if there's a noise violation, we have provisions in our code for that. If there's a parking violation or something like that, we can do that. But actually revoking a use permit is what we're talking about.
Other questions?
I had some questions as it relates to kind of obscured intent. One of my concerns has to do with restaurants, manufacturing offices, and we have definitions or maybe really squirrely definitions of what those are in our code. And I wanted to make sure that if we, we move forward with regulations, that we're not going down the road and seeing somebody coming in with a restaurant, which is really a tasting room, or an office for a wine company, which ends up becoming a tasting room, or a manufacturing business which really is a tasting room. So I'm wanting to know if there's a way for us to look at some of the main uses and definitions in our zoning code, see if there's any way we can strengthen the language of those so it's clear that we're not getting tasting rooms in around back door? You know where I'm going at, so?
Absolutely.
And right now, the way I'm looking at this, there's no real, there's nothing really in any of this language that would preclude maybe that from happening, somebody coming and saying that they're a restaurant when really they're a tasting room, and they're only, you know? So I like to throw that out there, and maybe the Commission can comment on that, too.
Just, just in response and feedback, again, if we, if we're working within the structure of the downtown district, the theory is the city doesn't really get involved in that with respect to 02s, other than that, because those will still continue to be principally permitted, as opposed to inside the downtown district, we would require that. So anywhere outside of that area, they may be happening today, and we wouldn't know about it unless it's a complaint-based code, which we have. That's how we'd find out.
Well, if I could jump in and try to address that question from, from my perspective, I believe, first of all, any restaurant use would require a use permit. It also would require a different license from the ABC, so it's unlikely that somebody would go to the trouble of getting the use permit for a restaurant and a more expensive license from the ABC and then just use it as a tasting room. I think it's unlikely.
What about the office type of use, or where, I guess the headquarters for, you know, Joe Schmo's Wine Company, and would there be a need for us to say?
Well, it still, I think it still is governed by the type of license they get to serve wine.
Okay. Okay.
That's right.
And that would be a type 47.
A type 47?
Yeah.
Okay. So there would be really a need for us to strengthen the language and our definitions for the other uses?
Probably not, given the licensing question. I have seen regulations where a restaurant is described by a percentage of, it's usually to differentiate it from a bar, however, not from a restaurant, where you sometimes have a situation where somebody calls a full bar a restaurant, but then serve only token food. So I have seen regulations that describe how much food you have to serve to be considered a restaurant versus a bar. But I've never seen it in the context of a wine tasting or, as David referred to it, a type 2 or a type 42 license, because those licenses are so dramatically different relative to ABC. But I have seen it in the context of a restaurant versus a bar.
Right. A good example would be like Steiner's, which they clearly serve food there, but it's a bar, it's not a restaurant. And I would imagine there's a certain type of license that they have there, which would be different than, say, for example, the El Dorado Kitchen, which has a bar, but its main use is a restaurant.
So I think the differentiation is less important where you, where both are use permit, they're not principally permitted uses, but both require a use permit because you can deal with those percentage issues as a result of conditions of approval of the use permit.
Right. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Larry Barnett?
My concern is about, and I may have missed it in here, maybe it's there, but my concern is about this issue of physical spaces. There's been a trend for some of the wine tasting facilities to expand into their yards, to bring in additional tables and chairs and space, and essentially be able to accommodate what appears to be a much larger, much larger groups of people. There's even facilities that have erected essentially year-round tenting, which has created de facto interior space, and rather than garden, open garden space that would be seasonally used. I don't recall any language in here about seats or limitations, or the, essentially the extension or expansion of use into what I think honestly is a different category than a wine tasting facility, which I think of as, and this may be my naivete, but I've tended to think of a wine tasting experience as one that's relatively small, a small number of employees, relatively low-scale operation, wine club sales, a bar that accommodates, could accommodate, or a tasting space that could accommodate perhaps a group of six people or 10 at the most. And I'm seeing other places now morph into an entirely different animal. I don't know if we have a special category for that type, or whether we should have a special category for that type, but if someone buys a property, which has heretofore been a single-family home, that happens to be commercially zoned, and we have some of those, and then makes this application, should we have some kind of limitations on what exactly the scale of this business can be before it moves into a different category? So that's, that's my question. I'd love to see what the rest of the Commissioners think.
Yeah, so in that vein, as we've mentioned, they've been principally permitted up until this new permit structure. And the intent, if we haven't said it clearly, we can make it more clear perhaps, but the intent is just like you have with a conditional use permit or a use permit, you as a Commission will refine the use that you're allowing at that time, to be in the space, the number of seats, that kind of a thing. Ours limitations- Ours limitations, additional things on a per site basis. And so in, I'm not gonna get this right, but in section eight of nineteen point five zero one two zero, it does talk about the fact that wine tasting permits run with the land. WTUP granted and compliance with this section shall continue to be valid upon a change of ownership of the site, business, service, use or structure that was the subject of the permit application, provided that the use allowed pursuant to such WTUP remains in continuous operation at the subject site without interruption or abandonment. It doesn't talk about expansion of things of those nature. But the point is, just like with a traditional CUP, anybody that wants to add square footage, more seats, they come for a use permit modification. This commission's done that historically.
Okay, I appreciate.
I'm sorry. Additionally, if you take a look at page fifty-three of sixty-six of your packet, and I don't know if it paginates that way, if you're looking at it electronically.
It doesn't.
Okay. So it is subsection six of the ordinance, under conditions of approval. And if you look at six F, as in Frank, which appears at the top of a page, in my packet it's fifty-three. In all WTUPs, all activity shall be limited specifically to the activity described in the WTUP. No expansion, enlargement of the area of use or relocation slash reconfiguration of any number of tables or seats shall be permitted without the issuance of an amendment to the WTUP by the planning commission.
Oh, well, that, that covers it. What does, what, what about the grandfathered uses? Are they going to fall under that same provision?
The grandfather's, the grandfathered uses are slightly less specific, although we could make them that specific if the planning commission chooses. Those appear, I'm gonna tell you again, in the paper packet on page fifty-four of sixty-six. Subsection C, non-conforming wine tasting facilities and wine bars. That section deals with non-conforming wine tasting facilities and wine bars may be continued subject to the following positions, provisions, except if it's otherwise provided. Non-conforming use of the land, non-conforming wine tasting facility or wine bar use may be continued, transferred or sold, provided that A, the use shall not be enlarged, increased or extended to occupy a greater floor area or portion of the site or structure than it lawfully occupied before becoming a non-conforming use. And additional uses on the site shall not be allowed unless the non-conforming use is first discontinued or made to conform and any replacement use complies with all applicable provisions of the development code. Now, we could go back to those, that very specific language in the WTUP that talks about number of tables and.
And, and I, and I think that would be a positive change in that definition of non-conforming use is pretty much the way any non-conforming use is treated in terms of an expansion of, of the footprint and things like that. Having owned a non-conforming use, when we, when we owned a bed and breakfast here in Sonoma, we ran into that provision. But, and perhaps once again, I'm just not clear about it. The, the issue of a currently existing grandfathered wine bar that is a conforming use, to what extent, or, or any of, are, are any of the existing grandfathered wine tasting facilities conforming uses or are they not conforming uses until they get officially reconvealed, which triggers the use permit requirement?
That was a long sentence, but the latter. So they are, they will all become upon the adoption of the ordinance, non-conforming, legal non-conforming.
Yes.
And they are not conforming until such time as they actually receive a WTUP under the ordinance.
Okay. Well, that solves it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, two questions please. I understand that the number we're looking at this evening in terms of the numeric number is thirty. It has been suggested that we may have an opportunity to have some discussion about changing that number. If a number is adopted this evening, or I should say recommended to the council to be adopted, what mechanism would there be and how would it go about if they chose to change that number? Just an amendment to their?
Yes, because this will be actually in your municipal code. So your city planner will be putting a chart up on the wall and making sure that when that number goes below thirty to twenty-nine, that there will be an opening for him to then bring a WTUP to the commission.
I wasn't very clear, I guess, with my question.
Go ahead. I actually took the question a different way, so perhaps maybe that was your question. But if the city council, when the ordinance gets to them, decides the number's not thirty, what's the mechanism for that? Was that your question?
Well, if they adopted it thirty and then six months down the road, a year down the road, they, they see that there are some unanticipated problems or what have, and they choose to change that number. Is it simply an amended?
That's correct, but it does have to come back to the planning commission at that point.
And my second question has to do with ABC. Is there much oversight on their part with wine tasting rooms?
I, I really don't know the answer to what the state of California does when, what kind of review process, inspections of that kind. I really don't.
And is it conceivable that if a wine tasting bar was in violation of a ABC rule, that they indeed could revoke the license and therefore would that, that would, they would lose their ability to have a tasting room?
In my experience, when we have had issues in any one of the number of jurisdictions that we represent with any facility that sells alcoholic beverages, it has been a communication between city and the code enforcement officials and ABC to address those issues because they have their own independent process for the revocation of a license. And then we have our independent process for the revocation of a use permit, assuming that we have one or code enforcement if it's just being operated as a nuisance. So yes, there is a, a process of both communication and coordinated enforcement.
Commissioner Burnett?
I have a few more questions. The first is how difficult is it to change municipally, municipal designated jurisdictions? For example, I can understand where the Plaza Retail over, or what is it, district? Prodd.
Yeah, the Plaza Retail overlay district.
I could see where that doesn't totally capture all the sort of wine tasting concentrations. You know, specifically perhaps North Girl, the Fig, et cetera there. But I can also, it's hard for me to justify putting numerical restrictions on opening of wine tasting rooms in the marketplace, for example. Because I believe the goal of this ordinance was to try to create a better balance on the plaza. And, and so I could see where the Prodd is imperfect, but I could see also where the downtown district is way too large. And I'm curious, is there any mechanism, perhaps not tonight, because I understand we're up against a May first clock, which for other reasons, you know, we do have to pass something by May first. But is there a way we could create, how difficult would it be to create perhaps a better geography than the two options we're given? Does that make sense? Because according to this, you know, when this ordinance is passed, you would not be able to open up a wine tasting room in the marketplace. Now, I'm not saying that there's people lining up to do that, but that to me doesn't, that seems a little restrictive. Okay.
We, we could possibly create another overlay district. That'd be one way of going about it. But that would be, that'd be going around.
Or perhaps just expanding the Prodd a little?
I, I think there's a simpler way to do it. The simpler way to do it would be build a boundary into this ordinance itself that drew a line, included another map and said, within the area delineated on map figure twenty-one point seven. So I think it's doable and it's not particularly difficult. As we've discussed this ordinance though, for quite a while now, since the moratorium came into place, we've alternatively discussed those designations of either the Prodd or the downtown or the whole city. You know, those have kind of been the three delineation points. There is no prohibition against creating another delineation point and it isn't particularly difficult to do. It's just another map within the, within the development.
Yeah. I, I guess I'd like to see what the rest of the commission thinks because I do think the Prodd might be a little too small, but I also think the downtown district is way too large.
When we come back to discussion, we can go through that. Let's just look for more questions and then take it to the public.
I just want, or a couple, real quick ones. The last time this was before us, we were talking about a sourcing requirement in the sense that I believe it was like seventy-five percent would have to be from Sonoma County or Sonoma Valley. Other municipalities or jurisdictions have done that, I believe St. Helena. And I didn't see that in here. Is that, is there a reason for that or?
Yeah. As I mentioned at the outset, there were a few things that the council did discuss, but did not include within their desire to have you consider. And, and as I mentioned, I think, maybe I was in another life, you can add to that recommendation of what we have tonight to go back to the council. And let's say, for example, you want a sourcing, a hundred percent sourcing, the council could say, thanks, but no thanks. We're gonna do zero sourcing. So they've already said, spoke to that issue and a couple of other minor things that didn't make it back to the commission.
Right. So we're sort of just going through the motions because they're gonna do whatever they want to do, right?
No, I, I would say, I mean, in the case of the geography, that was a very, that took more time. Out of the context of what the council discussed, that took the most time and trying to figure out a number. And they said, no, let's see what the commission can tell us on that. They spent probably what, less than five minutes, I think, on the concept of sourcing in a general discussion. One council member was stronger towards that component as, as the, as opposed to the balance of the council.
Well, so that's sort of related, sorry.
I apologize. I do think that there was at least one or more council members that were still interested in a sourcing discussion. So I think if the commission wants to pass on thoughts about that, if that comes back up before the council and they're interested in having a discussion, they'd have both the benefit of the commission's thoughts. And they would also have at that point not trapped themselves in a, oh, well now we want to talk about it, but the commission didn't, so we have to refer it back because it wasn't something that the commission considered. So if the commission is interested in that discussion and wants to pass on your thoughts to the council, I would encourage you to do that regardless of the fact that they have.
Right.
Given some direction.
So that relates to the last sort of question, I guess. Two sort of questions that are related. So sourcing requirements are legal in the sense that other jurisdictions have passed that and you can pass sourcing requirements. Can you pass, I guess it wouldn't be sourcing where it doesn't matter where the grapes come from, but can you also mandate that the business has to be Sonoma County based? Like, could you mandate that a winery be a Sonoma County or Sonoma Valley winery, but you can get your grapes from wherever? Does that make sense?
On both the question of sourcing.
It's not really a sourcing. It's sort of like.
I was gonna just sort of lump them together for a second. The question of sourcing, whatever you're sourcing, either the sourcing the business entity, for lack of a better word, or the grape, or the content of the bottle. You can't be arbitrary and capricious in terms of establishing why you're narrowing the scope of who can apply for something. So provided you had an articulated basis for why that needed to be or what interest of government you were trying to serve, you could probably do that. Enforcing that, just like, you know, the council had a long discussion about enforcing sourcing and how do you determine what is the content of what's in the bottle and how do you chase it down? The other unique situation now is that as staff was drafting this ordinance and why wine bars came into the discussion was it was easy to see how you gotta work around the wine tasting facility. You sold one bottle of somebody else's wine and now you are a wine bar. You weren't a wine tasting facility and that seemed to be something that we didn't necessarily want to encourage. So wine bars got added. But the sourcing issue becomes more complicated when you're talking about multiple sources of the wine. And it also becomes more complicated when you're saying it has to be local. Now, do all bottles they sell have to be local or just the proprietor? When I say local, like Sonoma Valley, for instance.
Right.
Can the Sonoma Valley proprietor sell Napa Valley wine? So it gets a little sort of circular in terms of trying to both keep people from dancing around the ordinance by selling something else and then also including a requirement that they can't, I guess, can't sell something else.
One concern that I have, and I know that I've heard this discussed, is if we limit the number of wine tasting rooms, it, the value of a non-conforming, currently operating wine tasting room, potentially the value of that space goes up. And there's concern that perhaps that will crowd out smaller wineries and the rents will go up and only large, you know, major winery corporations will be able to, you know, get those spaces. And so, I mean, obviously anytime you start regulating the market, there's a lot of unintended consequences either way. Can you put a limit on the number of cases a winery produces a year to apply for one of these WTUPs? To try to avoid those large, you know, major wineries going in?
From a legal perspective, I think that's the same answer.
As the previous.
As the previous in terms of, and again, there's no case about this. So I'm sort of to, to an extent telling you what I think would happen or likely to be happening. But I think it's the same legal question. Can you articulate your basis? What is your governmental interest in saying it can only be small facilities? Or are you looking to say X number can only be small, small facilities? And how do you define what's small versus large? And, and how do you justify that definition with factual bases? I don't know that we have those factual bases at this point. We could go looking for them or maybe that's a later amendment to this ordinance to address that concern if it starts to come to fruition. Right now, I'm not sure we have that information, although certainly staff could look for it if that's the commission's interest.
All right. Thank you.
If I can just add to that, along Veronica's point and your question, I seem to recall when I was looking at the types of licenses that ABC issues, there is a certain number of, I think it may be volume of dollars as opposed to barrels, but I can look that up while we're talking. Yeah, I, I remember there was a distinction between their smallest permit and the cost for that permit not being that much indifference between a small winery and a much larger one. I want to say it was in the range of five or six hundred dollars to seven or eight hundred dollars. There wasn't a whole lot of margin between that and the volume of, but again, whether it was dollars or barrels, I can't remember. I'll look that up.
Other questions? Did you have a commission?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on zoning code type issues with respect to parking and help me understand what the parking code or our parking ordinance or zoning ordinance relates to a ratio of parking for a wine tasting room or a tap room or a wine bar. I know that on the plaza, we have kind of a, a unique situation, but off the plazas, a little bit different. So is there, is there a parking standard established for a wine bar or a wine tasting room?
I don't recall, but I know the general retailer on code is about one to three hundred, but I can look that up.
And the reason why I bring this up is that right now, and I might be going towards looking at a conditional use permit for a wine tasting bar throughout the city within certain zoning codes, like commercial or mixed use, outside of the downtown. And it's not quite a retail use if we've been using that standard because you think about a wine tasting room, people visit, they spend time there. There's usually tables and chairs. There's usually food served with it. Maybe that's not the, the primary use, but it, they also tend to have special tastings, special events. And so my feeling has always been that our parking code has always needed to be updated to, to reflect that use, if it was gonna be a permitted use in a commercial zone, say on Broadway or West Napa or West Spain Street where there's commercially zoned properties. So I'm hoping that our update to.
to the ordinance and addressing this kind of looks at parking. We need to set a benchmark for what we think parking should be, and it should be in the, in the zoning code under the parking code. And I'm hoping that my commission will listen to me because I believe that we should expand this above and beyond just the downtown district and, and the plaza and look at a conditional use permit throughout the city. Because I think this is much more of an intensive use than just a retail establishment. It also sometimes requires outdoor seating area to create that ambiance. And there's a, there's a potential for many sites outside of the downtown zoning district that would, you know, accommodate a use like this. And we don't want to discourage them. It's just that I believe we should have a special process for them and a, and a parking standard for them. So with that said, my second question has to do with non-conforming uses. So if we move forward with an ordinance which creates thirty-four non, thirty non-conforming uses, but we have, we have thirty-four right now? Okay. So there's a, there's a, there's a difference of four. So when do you consider, I should have put this, can any of those thirty-four come in after an ordinance goes into play and ask for an expansion or, or, or modification? Or is it only until we get below the thirty threshold?
Correct. Only until we get below the thirty threshold.
So somebody that has a tasting room that would love to expand to, say, in their back garden or their front yard or reconfigure some storage area into tasting space, they wouldn't be able to do that until we get to that magical number of thirty, twenty-nine?
That'd be correct unless they're outside of the downtown district because those would have a different set of rules.
Right. And so, but regardless, even those that would be outside of the, the, the plaza area. So it's that area between the plaza and the end of the downtown district. There's, is there no distinction between those? They, those are part of the thirty-four. So.
Yeah. So we've regulated it to, this WTUP, once the ordinance is adopted, is all within. The prod is within the downtown district. I guess that's the easiest way to say it.
So, so to me, the magic numbers, we wouldn't see any sort of conditional use permit come in until we got to the threshold.
Till you get to twenty-nine.
Right. Unless, of course, we required a conditional use permit for all wine tasting rooms in the city and, and, but with specific, uh, specific criteria for those in the downtown and those along the plaza.
You could, and that was part of the discussion, say, a wine tasting use permit is required everywhere in the city, but the numerical limitations only apply in whatever you set that boundary at. Right now, in accordance with this ordinance, it's the downtown. But yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any final questions before we take it out to the public? Seeing none, I now invite the public, if you would like to speak on this item, please approach the podium, state your name, address, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Vic in forty, seven five five Broadway. The, first thing, I would agree that all wine tasting facilities should require a use permit just because of what Commissioner McDonnell has been saying. They are fairly intensive use. They're, they have far more parking demand than retail or office uses and really need to, to go through a use permit process, just like a bar or restaurant would be taking, would be required to do. The, all of the current ones that are legal non-conforming or will become legal non-conforming, and none of those have had a use permit because they were treated as a permitted use. They were treated as a retail use. And that created a number of problems. One of them is, is the parking issue. And another is that the, there's really no control over them essentially. Since they haven't been, been issued a use permit, it would seem to me it would be easy to terminate their use with some trigger. And it, and it could be a trigger such as comparable to what's done with vacation rentals, especially in the county, where the, the use terminates or the property sells, or in this case with the wine tasting room, where the lease terminates, that they know, they would be terminated and would have to go through a use permit process if they wanted to continue. So I think there is a, a history of that having been done both in the city of Sonoma and, and the county with, with the vacation rentals. I think it, you may want to think carefully about using ABC license types as a tie to the, the ordinance because they have nothing to do with planning. They're strictly a legal term or legal control of alcohol. And so you're kind of separating these different things based on something that has nothing to do with planning. And the patio seating is an excellent comment, that you could use the same standards that is used with restaurants and bars where the, the indoor seating creates a maximum of outdoor seating based on no more than twenty-five percent. So, and a maximum size, I think, is an excellent idea because the, you know, you could have fifty people in the, in some facilities. And where do you?
I have to ask you to wind it up, Vic.
Thank you.
David Eicher, E-I-C-H-A-R. And I think you do need to include more than just the plaza. I would like to say it citywide in terms of the, the total number, a limit of thirty, because I foresee that the wine tasting rooms moving down Broadway and filling in the limited number of commercial spaces down there. So I think you would need to include at least that part down there. And I do agree that to put more in, as much as you want in, in your recommendation to the city council, because it's very easy to take something out if they don't want it, then to put it in. And specifically, the, the sourcing. There were two council member, Cook and Harvey, that really wanted it. Two said, well, the Sonoma Valley Vintners Association didn't necessarily want it, so we don't need to have it in. And I presented them, and they didn't quite understand that the wine labels have a lot of information that can be used. So I brought two bottles of Macrossi wine here. And one in the front says Russian River Valley. The other has an appellation of Sonoma Coast. By that, you know, since it is an appellation within the county of Sonoma, seventy-five percent of the, by volume of the wining here has to come from grapes within Sonoma County. So it's very easy to, to enforce because all you have to do is go in and look at the bottle. Does it have an appellation? And it's required on, on there. And as Mr. Kelso Barnett's question about production is also a producer, has to be included. And this one says, produced and bottled by Macrossi Winery, Sonoma, Sonoma County, California. So the, the city council wasn't interested in doing one hundred percent of the wines, but maybe twenty or thirty percent of the wines served or sold to be within, sourced within Sonoma County. So I think that's a good idea to do that. And the reason is you want to have the local wineries and not some from Napa, Livermore, Lodi coming in here with their tasting rooms. I think amortization is a way to say, okay, in five years, all the existing non-conforming uses have to either get a permit or you're gone. Or you could say something like, the existing wineries can have a permit, but the landowners, the, because it usually, the use permit runs with the land, not with the wine tasting. And so an amortization is also a way to help the wineries, wine tasting rooms move from one location to another location. Don't see my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
I'll take my props.
You're good.
Enough for all of them. Sorry.
Mr. Chair, I think they need to stay here so they can be part of the record.
Yeah. Anyone else care to speak?
Hi, Tom Conlon, C-O-N-L-O-N, eighteen eight fifty Robinson Road. So I, I understand that we've been working on this now for, it seems, feels like at least two years. And I know that everyone's eager to wrap things up, but I'm a little surprised we don't have more specificity on a couple of these topics we've been hearing tonight. To the, to the matter of sourcing, clearly that's a concern for some of our smaller local businesses that are frankly, they, they came here and they told us that they really need access to the plaza to be able to keep the startup of the wine industry moving. And I think you really need to listen to that. So I really do hope there is some form of small business protection in the regulations that you ultimately approve. I don't know if sourcing is the right way to do it, or if size of business is the right way to do it. I would defer to those small businesses to help you define that. The difference between the property owners and those small business entities that really are the vitality of our community, I think we should, we should pay close attention to that. To the matter of location, I'm very concerned about the unintended consequences of imposing a regulation on just the plaza overlay zone. And having that then create the distortion that it just pushes the businesses outside of that zone. Also concerned about the, if wine becomes the limited business opportunity, the one regulated activity, then that will put pressure on other forms of recreation deriving businesses, the other alcohols, cider, beer, tequila, all of those other kinds of tasting facilities, I suppose. If it's not specifically addressed by this ordinance, you could have spillover effects there. So I think you should contemplate that as well. And then to the issue of just the total, total number, my understanding is that the reason there's a moratorium is that the number we have now feels past the, the sweet spot to many members of the community. And so I would just submit that the thirty, twenty-nine, to me personally, feels like it's still pretty high. And especially if it's not regulated beyond just the downtown. It essentially just means that you really haven't accomplished very much. That would be my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else?
Richard Idell. I live at one eight nine zero zero Carrigan Road, and I'm the proprietor of Idell Family Vineyards. I'm also a wine lawyer. I echo the comments of the last speaker. I've been kind of following this issue a little bit. And I'm surprised at the level of detail that isn't known. A type, a type O two license is not the same as a type forty-two license. They're completely different animals. And why you would treat them the same, I have no idea. You know, in the wine business, these days, a small winery like mine that makes four hundred and fifty cases cannot get distribution. The only way you sell your wine is by having contact with consumers and selling direct to consumer. A wine tasting room in a downtown area is a, is an available outlet for that, particularly if you don't have the tens of millions of dollars it costs to put a facility out on ag land. So a lot of the wine tasting rooms that are in Sonoma are small mom and pop operations like mine that go there because they can have contact with the public. The kinds of restrictions that you're talking about, capping tasting rooms, requiring use permits, what that's going to do, mark my word, five years from now, you're going to have nothing but Constellation owned brands, Gallo owned brands, Jackson Family owned brands in these, in these spaces because the, the small guy will not be able to deal with it. And I would, and I will go and speak to the city council on this because I think that there's a lot of mixing of apples and oranges that's going on here. When you talk about type forty-eight or a type forty-seven, depending upon the license that you have from the ABC, you're either required to serve food or you can't serve food. A bar is not a restaurant. The type of, of tasting room permit that you get from the ABC is an adjunct to your bond. You have a right to have a tasting room in your production facility, and you can get a duplicate license to operate a tasting room in a, in a satellite area. It's a completely different animal. And all it allows you to do is serve tastes and glasses of your wine to potential customers. So I know you're on a deadline here, but I think to a large degree, I want to go back to the drawing board and enlist some, some advice on some of these concepts that from what I've heard here tonight in the discussion that you guys just had, there's a lot of misinformation and there's a lot of concepts that you don't understand. And I don't, I don't slight you for it. I've been a lawyer for forty-two years. And this area of the law is, is not easy. So, and I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Maureen Cottingham, Sonoma Valley Vintners and Growers Alliance. I live at three six six East Spain Street. Thank you so much, Tom and Mr. Idell, for your comments. I agree with them. Based on the recent report from Sonoma Silicon Valley Bank that was just released several months ago, or month ago, general sales of wine have started to decline. So this means that our industry needs to do things differently. This is brand new information. We need to start thinking outside of the box in order to support our industry. And our industry is going to need to start thinking outside of the box in order for them to have a healthy business, an viable business. Our role in Sonoma Valley as the vintners and growers is to protect our agricultural heritage and that we all live here in Sonoma Valley, as well as protecting our winemaking legacy, what we're known for worldwide, for being world-class, producing world-class wines. Allowing our vintners to open tasting rooms gives opportunity for our family run, as just said, family run or small produced, to be, to expand their business and to grow. We would welcome the opportunity to sit down with you, to share some of the information, answer any questions that you have, as Mr. Idell just alluded to. And we do not support limiting the number of, of, limiting our industry and limiting the number of tasting rooms on the square. With regard to local sourcing, we do not support the recommendation to regulate vintners to specific grape sourcing, year to year, vintage to vintage, harvest to harvest. The wine industry is very complex and regulating where the fruit comes from will be a very complicated issue and will impact our winery businesses dramatically. Again, we hope you will consider not limiting, but supporting an industry that has been our heritage since eighteen fifty-seven. And most importantly, the small family locally owned businesses that are in business to thrive here in our, in our town. So thank you so much for considering everything.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, staff. August Sebastiani, five sixteen Third Street East. I have some comments to make with regard specifically to my business at thirty-two Patton Street. We are Three Badge Beverage Corporation. We are Three Badge Beverage Corporation. And, you know, I'm not here to argue that, that this is a solution in search of a problem. I'm not here to argue that this is potentially cutting off our hand, despite our face, economically here in Sonoma, although I do hold both of those opinions. I'm here to talk and express some concerns specifically about the moving target, that is the geography, as it pertains to this conversation. Obviously, we've been discussing it now for, for a number of months and years. And, and as the goalposts have moved, we have kind of been uniquely positioned to follow, not just from the periphery, but actually now, as, as members of really two targeted classes here. And that is as a property owner in town, but also as a winery. And, and as we continue to grow, and we continue to look at our building, and we continue to hopefully be, at some point, maybe not so soon, but at some point before you, with a, a application for a use permit for our, our firehouse, we would love to have this be one of the options. An interesting fact is that we actually have applied with the federal government for an O two license. We don't currently have it. We are a wholesaler and importer specifically, but we've applied for an O two. That somewhat unfortunately was held up because of the government shutdown. And so now we're waiting for the ABC to get caught up long after the fact. And as you have a document, shame on me, is it thirty-six current wineries that are, are in the prod or beyond within, within the downtown district? It doesn't include us, although we had hoped that at some point it would. We just don't have the O two to sit and, and get in front of the city for an application for the use permit just yet. And I don't know when we will have it, because some of the pieces are still being put together, and, and the ABC's still playing catch-up in many regards. So, long story long, obviously, I hold opposition to, to any sort of regulation in this regard. And I think another interesting point that Ms. Cunningham mentioned is that it ain't all lollipops and rainbows for the wine business. You know, we heard about Constellation, and yes, maybe someday, Constellation's going to look at some of these existing wineries and, and see an opportunity for, for additional value, because one of these smaller wineries might hold a permit. Well, one of the major headlines from last week is that Constellation's abandoning forty percent of their wine portfolio altogether. That is a jaw-dropping statistic. Granted, a lot of these wines that they're referring to are, are the everyday variety, and not so much the premium wines that come from dear old Sonoma. But it's certainly worth considering as you move forward with regards to this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, August. Seeing no one else approach, I'm going to bring it back to the Commission and close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, if I can just provide a couple of comments. One, to your discussion prior to opening up, but it also came up during the discussion. That was regarding the differences in parking, and clearly, staff is aware of the, the complexity with respect to parking right now. Wine tasting facilities are there with a principally permitted permit, and yes, there's parking exceptions, if you will. But clearly, just like a restaurant, you know, putting in a restaurant in the downtown area, or anywhere for that matter, is going to have, from a building, building per occupancy, a different level of math relative to the square footage for a wine tasting that would be coming under a WTUP. The discussion was also brought up with respect to amortization. The city council did discuss that as well. But again, in their listing of things that they were interested in to pass to you as a commission, that was not a component of what they wanted to see included in an ordinance. And so, I think in one way, they were trying to save you some time to let you know what their framework was. But if the commission would like to have an amortization component, we can certainly pass that on to the council as well, for them to consider if there's any specific language. One, another thing that was discussed by the council, and that was the size of wine tasting facilities, and/or their percentage of a particular facility related to retail. So that came up as well, as to how large a facility could be. Could it have retail? And I think there was an interest on one council's members, concerns that he would like to see that combination continue. There are some, or there have been some, where they have a retail component relative to a wine tasting function. So, just wanted to kind of address those.
Thank you. I think as we move forward in discussion, that we, it should kind of be a two-pronged approach. First of all, we have some language in front of us that has come out of the city council as what they have requested to, to be considered. So I think we should go over anything that's in that current language to see if we have major disagreements with it, or, or do agree with it. And then, secondly, I think we should also propose a list of things that we would like to add to that. So, I would look for Commissioners-
Mr. Chair, if I can, just a suggestion, anyway, and you can certainly ignore it. In the staff report, page two, I itemized those things in bullet form. If you wanted to use that as a template, take a straw poll discussion, go down those items, and then, as you say, add things to things if, if there's not on that list already. Just, just a suggestion.
I'm sorry, are you talking about the items in what you've titled your analysis? We're going to have a discussion about-
Project summary, I think it is, in the staff report.
Okay, I, I would love to have a conversation at some point about the differential between paper copies in front of you and electronic copies in front of us, because as far as I'm concerned, it ain't working.
Yeah.
So, I, I do not know where, what you're referring to, then.
I think it's-
Then the answer is yes, it's the analysis.
It's the analysis section.
Analysis numbered one through eleven.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's off of the supplemental staff report. Thanks.
There's also, in the staff report, some, I don't know where that is. I think, I think what you're referring to, David, is, is the analysis section in the supplemental. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's two places where we have the components. There's a, and I'm learning about our computer system. We have a two-page staff report, and that's where I was referring to it in the first instance. And then to each staff report, apparently, we have what's called a supplemental report. And in the supplemental report is where it's under the analysis section.
Yeah.
And that's our basic structure of providing reports to the Commission and the council. So in the project summary, where it says, so you're either looking at one of two things. Number one, it's the staff report or the supplemental report. In the staff report, it's under project summary. In the supplemental, it's under analysis.
Commissioners, it's probably easier to use the list that's under analysis in the supplemental report, since that is numbered, and therefore clearer for you in terms of reference.
I agree, especially since I don't see those other paragraph in the staff report itself on, on what I just pulled up. It's not there.
I think, Mr. Computer glitch, because I don't actually have the list from, of bullet points either. I only have page one.
That disappeared.
It disappeared, yeah.
So we will work on the, the list under supplemental report analysis. And there's eleven items there. Who wants to start?
I guess I'll start. Let's go to item number two. It says, new tasting rooms, wine bars are authorized by a WTUP. Talks about numbers. I won't go all the way through it. But I wanted to see if there is some language or clarification that says that no new or expansion of any wine tasting bar, tap, bar, et cetera, until the threshold of twenty-nine is reached.
That's in the ordinance itself already?
Okay, so there's, there's, okay. I just want to make sure that's the case. Thanks. And then the, item number five, this is the geographic area for the issuance of a WTUP is the downtown district. I'd like to pull that and discuss that, requiring that a use permit would be required without any nor, numerical limit, but still, a use permit would be required in a C district, a CG district, and MX zoning district with an issuance of a, of a similar type of permit with a similar criteria to evaluate it.
So you're essentially saying citywide?
Citywide, yes.
I, I would support a citywide use permit if we reduce the numerical limit to just the prod, if that makes any sense.
Yeah. Hold, hold a limit within the down, the plaza overlay?
Yeah, if you're outside the prod, you have, you're not, you don't have to wait until it gets to twenty-nine. You can apply for a use permit, which by the way, may be rejected. You know, it's up to the planning commission.
And that, that was my intent, is there would be a limitation in the downtown district and along the plaza with the same criteria and the same language that we're currently looking at. But in addition, to require a use permit throughout the whole city in the C, CG, and MX zoning districts.
Do we have consensus by the Commission on that one? I'm seeing lots of nods, so I think that's one thing we would like to move forward with to the council.
So with that, right now, if you recall, we have twenty-six zero twos inside the prod, and we also have some forty-twos inside the prod. So we can do the math, and then figure out if that number's an acceptable number.
But we're not talking about that number right now. We're just saying, use permit, citywide, and not, no numerical limit, other than outside of that, those, that district.
Sorry, I actually heard two different things, so I want to try to dial down a little bit. So I heard some Commissioners say that wine tasting use permit, citywide, but the numerical limitations apply in, and then I heard two separate things, the downtown district or the prod. Forget about what the number is for a minute, and-
I'd say prod.
Yeah, I'm saying a numerical limit within the prod.
Okay.
And then outside, you have to-
Do we have consensus on that?
I would agree upon that, yeah.
I, that's fine, for me. I, I would like to suggest, because I, I think if we go down and each commission member simply picks out the items that they're interested in, the conversation's going to get kind of fragmented. What, what I'd recommend, if, if it's okay with the Chair, is that we basically start with number one, get the sense of the group, then move on to number two-
Agreed.
And, and just make our way through the list systematically.
Well, let me, let me just finish it off by saying, in addition, if we were to move forward with the citywide use permit process, I would also want specific language, at least at a minimum, to establish a parking requirement for these types of uses, and then also a specific ratio of the maximum square footage within a building that could be devoted to tasting, and also a cap on how much could take place outside. So now we can go forward and start the other way.
Okay, is there anything else on item number one? Pretty much says, establish use permit, so I think we go along with that one. Item two, we just talked about. Item number three.
Can we put it on the overhead?
Yeah, we could, all right, yeah, we should step back to item two. Does anybody have a particular issue with limiting the number to thirty? Would you like to see a different number?
If you're going to use the prod, that's only down one.
This is in the prod.
If it's going to be, if the numerical limit is only within the prod, what's the number in the prod?
Thirty-one. It might be thirty-two. It's either thirty-one or thirty-two.
If we, if we can refer to the chart, I'd rely on the chart rather than my memory. So, we need to go to the exhibit, oops.
How did, how was the number thirty determined, from thirty-four?
Well, it was, it was a number that was less than thirty-four, within the parameters of what the council asked for. If you recall, they asked for a reduction between two to six, so that seemed like a logical point.
Okay, so whatever, I would just support whatever the number is in the prod, minus four.
So we have twenty-six in the prod. Yeah, if I can just do the math, there's a, you'll see the chart that talks about, that shows twenty-six in the prod, the type zero-two, and then you also add three more, and that shows you where the twenty-nine is. You see that in the bottom right-hand corner? So we've got twenty-nine, a combination of O twos and forty-twos, total of twenty-nine. So what was that, Kelsey?
So do twenty-five.
So twenty-five total, and you don't really care whether O fours, excuse me, forty-twos or twos, it's, just want to go with twenty-five.
Question, comment on the numbers, and this may not be the right time to discuss it, but I do want to have some discussion about any flexibility with the numbers relative to the small wineries. Case in point, I know that at one time, we had a kind of like a consortium of, of different wineries gathered together at what is now Pangloss Cellars, and I do think it's worth discussing the potential impact on the small wineries. But again, whether now is the time to-
Well, you, you were talking about, I think it was called Enoteca.
I couldn't pronounce it, so that's why.
Yeah, and, and if I understood the concept, they may have had four or five different small wineries represented in a single location, and, but it was a, it was a large location. I don't know, you know, I, I was, I'm assuming that Enoteca itself was the master tenant, so to speak, and, but, you know, we don't have any history on that in front of us. I, I, I think it's an interesting area of inquiry. I'm not sure what we can do about it tonight. It would require defining what a multi, a multi-winery use would be. We might have to get into definitions of how many, and who would qualify. I, I, it's complicated. The whole thing's complicated.
It is, but I, I think it would be a worth discussion, because it seems like what I heard this evening was some real concerns about some of the, the mom-and-pop wineries. And they make up part of the spirit of Sonoma, so I would hate to create something that becomes a hardship, when we could have thought a little bit outside the box, and maybe create some sort of avenue by which we'd still allow for that.
Should we, should we have that discussion now? Because I agree, I wanted to sort of have general, like thirty thousand square foot or feet, whatever. You know what I'm saying?
Altitude.
Thank you. I sort of wanted general comments about just the entire process, and, and maybe, should we do that before we go? I mean, because I think what Commissioner Willard-
Mr. Chair, if I just have one suggestion in response to that. Let's say we, there's seven, all of you want to go ahead and say, let's do some kind of limitation on size. You can say, without picking a number, we can all forward that recommendation, staff can forward that recommendation to the council, and then have the council deliberate, know that's the full consensus of the commission. Or you can try to get down to wordsmithing tonight.
Well, I, I think the, the issue we have before us is, and, so if, Chair, can I make just a general comment?
Of course.
And, we have to pass something by May first, right? And so we're sort of in a position where, and from what I understand, ordinance has to, there has to be like a second reading, and there's a certain amount of time, and, right?
Sorry, thirty days. So first reading, introduction, then adoption, which must occur five, no fewer than five days later.
Right.
And then thirty days before an effective date.
So we're sort of getting to the point where we have to pass something.
Yes.
And, so my, the way I'm looking at this is, and we've discussed this in the past, and I think- And so my, the way I'm looking at this is um, and we've discussed this in the past, and I think one of, you know, there was a member of the public that sort of highlighted this as well. I don't think this process, and by the way, this is not, has nothing to do with our esteemed planning director, as he said, he received this, this process. But I don't think this process has been a good one, quite frankly. In the sense of providing us enough information on how to determine, like for example, when we pick the number twenty-five or thirty, or whatever it is, what, why, you know? I mean, I think there's the general, I, I think we have a situation where the wine industry has changed, where before you needed acreage and a winery and et cetera, where now, from what I understand, you can buy grapes and have a crush facility and put a label on it, and so basically that access to market is your access to distribution. It's your presence, it's your marketing, it's all wrapped into one, and so these people, these uh, these small businesses are willing to pay a little more, because that's basically all their primary components of a business, all wrapped into one. And so there are people that believe that the rental market on the Plaza has inflated. And so we have a situation now where if we're looking at the Plaza as a sort of holistic, you know, attraction for, for not only visitors, but also for locals that enjoy it, we could be in a situation where there could be endless numbers of wine tasting rooms, and do we want sixty? Do we want seventy? Do we, I mean, what is the number? I don't think anyone wants artificial limits, but it, it's a very, as Commissioner Larry Barnett said, it's a very complicated situation. And I think the process requires a real thoughtful analysis of all the unintended consequences. And we tried to bring that up at the beginning of this process, in my view, and this is not now, but in my view, this process never really lent itself to the kind of thinking that we need to, to know, and so the reason why I support a number below what's currently allowed right now is not because I think that's a good number, or because I even know that's a number. What it does is it buys time for us to have a comprehensive, high-level economic analysis during the general plan update that will perhaps create a whole new um, process in the next year or so. But right now, if we don't pass something by May first, you know, the doors are open, and then you create, could create a lot more non-conforming uses, if that makes any sense. I think this economic development should be part of a, of a, of the general plan update, and um, and so, and so that's sort of where I'm going. It, it sort of buys time to actually, so we could do the process, in my view, better. Does that make any sense?
Makes sense, but it's, it's also a, a fact of life that if we don't act now and pick some arbitrary number uh, which buys us the time, we're, then we're gonna have a, a, a larger problem on our hands, so.
Which is why I support it.
Right.
Not because I think it's necessarily the right thing to do long-term, but just in the short term.
Are we finished with item two?
Well, um, Commissioners, if I may, we certainly heard from Commissioner Kelso Barnett that his, uh, yeah, this is, one of you has to change your name, sorry, um, that uh, twenty-five was the number that he thought was appropriate inside the prod, um, given the number that are currently inside the prod, but I'm not sure that we heard from the rest of you if you agreed with the number twenty-five.
Well, I, I think we also had agreement that we would not have it be the downtown district, but just the prod.
Correct.
Okay.
We did get that, yes.
All right, so then it, the question is, what is that number? Is it, do we have consensus that twenty-five within the prod is an appropriate number?
I, I think that works in the sense that it buys us some time, and I think I agree with Commissioner Kelso Barnett that uh, it'd be nice to have more thought.
Yeah.
Put into this.
So we have consensus for twenty-five.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any problem with number three? If not.
Well, just a quick clarification. The exception to this would be that, that they'd be allowed in residential zoning. I mean, these are all the, these are all the commercially usable zones, correct? C, C G, and.
No, 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 and yes. The no part is they're prohibited, because they're not expressly permitted in the residential zones.
Uh-huh.
So the fact that they're not allowed, either principally or conditionally, means they're not permitted in residential zones. These are the only zones that you have the discretion in the future to require permits.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Item number four, the, the blockface definition. Does anybody have a problem with that one?
And that would we be with the extension of the revised graphic, Mister Chair?
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, including First Street West.
I have a question.
And effectively, I think the, the only blockface uh, that doesn't have uh, the limit on it right now, or exceed the limit, is Spain Street.
Correct.
Anybody else have further comments on that?
Is that the entire block? I mean, we only have four blockfaces?
Yes.
So if we only have four blockfaces, that means that we can only have four tasting rooms fronting the Plaza, and that includes corners.
I have a question. If, if we have an outside corner, which blockface is it on?
Well, if you look at the Maya Restaurant, its door, I walked there Friday just to make sure, it's on the corner, but it actually faces First Street East, the door that opens.
It does, you're right.
Yeah, so you go around that little post that they have there, and it's actually facing, so that's why we include.
Okay, that's, so that's how you determine blockface, all right.
We did it by door, and then because that was a little bit ambiguous, that's why the map exists, so that each corner is assigned what blockface it's.
Thank you.
I'm a little concerned that, and again, this is back to my original point, that we're just trying to buy some time here, so we can have higher quality analysis, um, that if we have a numerical limit in the prod, and then we have a blockface limit, if you're an existing winery or facility on a blockface, the value of that, I mean, you're on the Plaza anyway, is gonna go way up, right? I'm just economics. And so what happens if you're a wine tasting facility in one of those locations, and your lease comes up, and your landlord knows that um, you know, you've got a real, they've got a really high-quality, non-conforming use here, they could conceivably really increase the rent, or if they have a, you know, again, I don't know what's going on with Constellation, but a larger um, winery, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm worried we're sort of artificially inflating the, and I get it's complicated, but.
I, I don't think staff can say whether or not that's true or not true, given the circumstances that we have, are, are trying to address here. Ultimately, the, the only way we could determine to balance that a little bit was to shorten the non-conforming time period. So if the existing tenant is told, I'll, I'll use an example, your, your rent will double this year.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're gonna double your rent. You're, you're currently paying five dollars, we're gonna charge you ten dollars a square foot. Um, and the existing tenant says, I'm gonna move, I'll move outside the prod, I'll move outside the blockface, whatever it is, I'm gonna move. Then the property owner is going to have to read tenant in sixty days. And if they don't read tenant in sixty days, they lose their non-conforming status.
Unless they have someone lined up.
Unless they have someone lined up, correct. I mean, that's the way they could avoid the issue, is to have someone waiting in the wings to take over the space at their inflated rent.
I, I guess, again, we're in one of these things, we're gonna wait and see what happens, but I could conceivably say that at the, at the time a lease expires, or a tenant moves out, uh, you lose the non-conforming use, and you have to get in, in line for a new use permit. I'm saying that is another possibility, not having to wait sixty days, but just do it immediately upon termination, but that's, that's a tough one.
So, couple of things, and we've addressed this issue, I think, three times in the last twenty-four months. In order, those people are all subject to, to notice and the right to a hearing before their non-conforming status is revoked, essentially. And that has, comes back to intent to abandon. We've added to the ordinance a conclusive presumption that there's an intent to abandon, where it sits for more than sixty days voluntarily, for lack of a better word. That's hard to do with an immediacy requirement, obviously, so um, a, a lot of research, notwithstanding this is a difficult subject, and there are competing interests, a lot of research actually did go into the question of what we could and couldn't regulate with regard to this ordinance. And a lot of thought went into the questions of, you know, type two, type forty-two, what is the likelihood of a switch-over, et cetera? I think we were balancing certain interests at the staff level and trying to address some things while not addressing others. So while it may seem arbitrary to members of the public and those who are beneficially interested, I do think that a, a lot of thought did go into it, um, but not a lot of study relative to, I'll call it, the economic factors that drive and, and some, some uh, other things that commission members have mentioned that would be good for the long-term to address relative to the ordinance itself.
I, I guess my point is, we've spent god knows how much money on cannabis studies. We've sent, spent, we just spent twenty-five thousand dollars on a housing study. You know, why don't we spend some money on a thought, you know, do you know what I'm saying? Okay, cause these are very complicated issues.
I definitely understood. I, I think staff as a whole definitely understood the comment and, and the interest in looking at it at a deeper level with some expertise in the economics of it, yes.
Question?
Yeah, I, question. If we set a numeric number for the, the prod, and that number today is conforming, in other words, they're there, what are we gaining with blockface? If, if we've limited the number, and those that are currently there are scattered, although some of them are on the Plaza, why are we now tightening the controls now that would then, I, I'm not sure I understand what we're gaining on that, provided that we do have a numeric limit?
Well, it, it becomes the time when you eventually drop down below that number, and you have the provision in place that you still have further restriction. Not only does a, a slot open up, but you only can have that slot in a certain position.
And, and I think that, that, you know, you, this is all touching, and, and some of the comments that, that Commissioner Kelso Barnett has been raising, are essentially move into areas of economics and philosophy, and, and we could have a very lengthy discussion about that, which we're already having. We've got essentially, I'll use the word loosely, we've got council direction in front of us. They've given us a very clear idea, basically, of what they're inclined toward, and they're looking for us to add our two cents. It's a little, it's a little strange as a process goes, but nonetheless, that's where we are, for a variety of reasons. I, just very quickly to respond to Mister Wellander's inquiry, I think that driving this entire process from beginning to end has been the attempt to balance this matter of character versus content. And when I say content, I mean, what is the commercial mix of the businesses on the Plaza? And to what extent does this, does the city want to have an influence on the character of that mix? And that's always been the issue, and that's why this one location per blockface is an issue, because it appears to satisfy the need to continue to have a presence for wine tasting on every block of the Plaza without the risk of the wine tasting locations dominating a block to the extent to which it becomes, uh, you know, a substantial portion of the retail locations on that block. If you look at uh, Napa Street from First Street East, going east, on the south side of the street, there's a whole succession of, of wine tasting businesses in a row. Or at least there have been, they, there's a lot of change over there. And that could happen on a blockface is just as easily if there were no limitations. So I think it's a qualitative issue. It's a, it's a, it's an arbitrary number. It's the number that Healdsburg has used, if I understand it correctly, is one per blockface. And they've got a smaller Plaza than we do, so the dimension of it is quite different. But this whole issue of the city's participation in these qualitative judgments is a complicated one. And uh, you know, it would be interesting, for example, whether the discussion might arise someday about, you know, how many real estate offices should there be in the downtown area?
And we've had that discussion in the past.
Of course, and, and for a while, it was banks, and everybody was kind of stunned by the number of banks, because now the banks are turning into empty buildings, and I, and I, like many others, are wondering what the heck's gonna happen to that real estate. So, you know, this is a dynamic, changing situation, and as Mister Idell noted, and others have noted, the, the wine industry and the wine business is subject to forces that go way beyond Sonoma. They have to do with matters of culture and generational understanding, and a shift in the relationship of, of product and marketing to a culture. And all of this is, is a, is a frothy mix at the moment. When I was growing up, I grew up in a household where there was wine, and you know, it was like wine, it was, it was, it was something kind of special, it had a certain cachet, and, and you'd go to the restaurant, but I'd go to a restaurant with my father, and you know, he'd ask for the wine list, and there was this whole thing about wine. Now wine's become kind of commonplace. The wine industry may not think of it as commonplace, but it's become commonplace. It's just, it's a commercial product, it's advertised like everything else, and it's hawked, and it's, and it's got small producers and large producers, and there's nothing that this town of Sonoma can do about those forces. This is a, this is a bigger issue than we will ever get our arms around.
I'd like to keep getting our arms around a few more things.
Thank you. Shut me up is often.
Just one more. Two questions. One, is the block from First Street West to Broadway on Napa Street? I mean, currently, there's, you know, there's two banks there, but is that one block, and then the other?
Yeah, it is.
But then North Spain Street.
We've got four, yeah. Would you like me to put the diagram up? Cause I, we, we tried our best to do a black and white diagram in the ordinance.
I guess my question that Commissioner, the other Commissioner Barnett said, um, okay, so.
There you go, that actually shows up. So.
So.
The, the, the diagram fails to show First Street East blockface, but we tried to do that with some colorization. I'm sorry, First Street West, yeah. So we just demarcated.
Also, that's one, okay. So my question is, Commissioner Larry Barnett said that the Healdsburg Plaza is smaller. And so there's one per block, but it's smaller. Since we have much larger blocks, if we're gonna do this blockface, because I'm sort of, I feel like if we already have a numerical limit, anyway, if we're doing the blockface, which it sounds like that's city council direction, would it be better to put two per blockface? Because it's, these are such large blocks.
Well, you actually have on that particular block on the south side of the street there, you actually have two already. We have zero on Napa, two on Spain, one on First Street West, and I think two on First Street East on the other diagram that we have in your back. You can kind of see those red dots, and now I'm gonna.
Don't you have two on Napa?
Let me have a look here.
No, you have three.
Hang on a sec. Well, I'll, I'll rely on the diagram.
I don't know, I guess, I just, you know, the, again, the whole concern with non, unintended consequences, if we already have a numerical limit, and then we add a blockface limit, the ones that have already checked off both boxes are really gonna get inflated in value.
Potentially. I think in, in the council discussion about this issue, it had to do with two interests. One, sort of overall, how many are there in their overall geographic area? And then the second was, you know, concentration in a four-block area of the city, and without the numeric limitation of per blockface facing the Plaza, a, a concern that if you had thirty, thirty, would they move closer in and be on that block face if you had no numerical limitation? Would that become thirty facing the plaza and have no sort of retail experience facing the plaza other than wine tasting? So I think the the concern was to, and we talked about other ways to address that, separation requirements.
Because they'd be coming back to us as a use permitting. Couldn't that be part of the evaluation?
It could be part of the evaluation and criteria to evaluate when granting the permit. And and it sort of is. It talks about undue concentration in a specific area. So again, the commission's recommendation could be to eliminate the block face requirement altogether or to up it to two. Again, the commission is free to make whatever recommendation you want to make irrespective of what the ordinance in front of you says. If you suggest take that criteria away or and leave it to the use permit or increase the number on those block faces, that's perfectly okay if that's the commission's desire for its recommendation.
Well, the reality of the situation is that there are already two on every block face except Spain Street, so at least two.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure of the one on First Street West block. As you see, I only see number nineteen there on that diagram, which would be the Rachel Maria, yeah. So I see nothing on the north side, excuse me, on the north block, if you will. Let's just call them north, southeast and west for practical purposes.
I think that unless I'm mistaken and it's changed use, there is a wine tasting building that's set back, that's accessible through a space next to a sign of the Bears' Building.
Yes, Lake County.
And and so it it doesn't quite look like it's got a facing on that block, but, and it may not have that address that is on First Street West, but it's visible from the sidewalk on First Street West and would, in my mind, count as a second location. So it's a. I personally don't have a problem with two locations on each block.
I I think the reality of the situation is that there's effectively at least a couple on most block faces, and I would be willing to go with two. We just went with two.
Okay. Two each block.
What's next?
But can I go back just a little bit? If on this map in front of you, the parcel we were just talking about is four-six-five, and I think it is, but I'll ask the planning director to.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No, it's not. It's it's further up, it's.
One-three-four.
One-three-four or so.
It's one thirty-four Church Street, but there's an entrance.
But it's, but it's open to the street on First Street West. There's a, is a, you could call it an alleyway or an access. It's quite wide next to the sign of the Bear Building.
So right, thank you. Right now, as this map is drawn, that would not be considered a parcel within the block face. So I just wanted to call this question because you were specifically talking about that parcel. So if you'd like us to add it, we can do that.
I say no. It's not block face. Because then we go over on the other side on First Street East, and we've got all those that are down the alley, and then are they block face, like the new one in the.
I would consider that to be an alley, just like the other wine alley and some of the others. But irrespective, I think we are still in favor of having two per block place, so that that gives an opening on First Street West if if we ever can get beyond twenty-five, down past twenty-five. All right. Are we, are we done with block face?
Yeah.
Okay. I think item number five, the geographic area, I think we've already decided that that should be citywide. Is that correct? I don't think we have any problem with making things legal non-conforming uses.
I have a question on that one, though.
Okay.
Number six. And that's about amortizing or giving a time limit somehow to these non-conforming and tightening up how we can eliminate them and force them to go conforming. And Chair Felder, I think, mentioned if their lease, if they change leases. I mean, is that reason enough for us to say they have to go through the use permit process? Not to, if there's a gap of sixty days, but what if they change lease period?
So there is a body of law relative to legal non-conforming uses that very specifically provides that the use runs with the land and not with the tenant. We had done some very in-depth research as respects the question of whether or not we could do this as a license as opposed to as a use permit type of issue. There are specific provisions under state law that state that the licensing of facilities that pour alcoholic beverages under a licensing scheme is preempted by state law, and we cannot establish a licensing scheme. Based on that, the city council made a determination that it did not want to try to make, I'll use the word backhanded, a provision in the ordinance that essentially said it ran with the tenant, and when the tenant left, it left, it left the building. So we did a shortened period of abandonment as sort of a balance to the fact that it wouldn't just be with the existing tenant, but rather would survive the existing tenant for a short period of time, giving the property owner a short period to re-lease. There's some case law out there dealing with a sixty-day abandonment period. That case essentially said you could not impose a sixty-day abandonment period unless you gave the right to notice in a hearing. So we are, again, notice in a hearing will exist, but we set it at the sixty days, which is the shortest period of time we felt could survive.
Can I ask a question? Because it it actually spans several of these points. Number six, number nine, and number eleven. In terms of actually defining what abandonment is, I think it might prove very useful for this change in the ordinance to actually define what abandonment is for a wine tasting room or a tap room or a wine bar.
It means not occupied.
Just not occupied?
Right now, that's, right now, there's a presumption if it is unoccupied for, the ordinance states if it's unoccupied for sixty days, it's presumed to be abandoned.
Well, I, see, I have a problem with that, because if you were a tenant wanting to do a tenant improvement and wanting to do an upgrade of a building, there's no exception if it's that rigid or if there's a fire or earthquake. Is there anything else?
It's merely, it's merely a presumption. And since the property owner is entitled to notice in a hearing, they could bring that information forward to the commission at the time, and the commission could take that into account.
So there.
That there wasn't an intent to abandon, that they have a tenant, they're doing their tenant improvements, they are essentially occupied but doing TIs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we move on? So I think we, even though it would be nice to to make it less than sixty days, I think we have to live with that for now and see how it works.
Are we, are we still on number seven here?
Yep.
So tap rooms are not trying to be reduced through attrition, right?
That's an error in the staff report, yes.
Okay. But that's not in the ordinance, yeah?
All right. Good catch. That's pretty much the same thing, isn't it? Number nine.
What's the difference between seven and eight?
Seven is somebody who's legal non-conforming today or after the adoption of the ordinance. Eight is you got a permit, but now your tenant has moved. So a WTUP has been issued, but now the tenant has moved out or went out of business. Can they keep holding? Now, you've got a numerical limitation, you've got somebody on maybe even a block face who's holding this permit with no tenant in it. How long can they hold it before they have to occupy or the or the permit is essentially lost and then becomes available for someone else to apply for?
So that begs the question, is sixty days a fair amount of time for somebody to find another tenant? Or is it even physically possible to, like, in the course of re-renting out a space? I I don't, I've never really rented out a commercial space before, but I mean, maybe, Sheila, you can enlighten us, if somebody loses their tenant, how how quickly can you actually re-establish, say, for example, in a similar?
Well, I actually think.
Like a shoe store to a shoe store or.
I think that Commissioner Kelso Barnett's on to, what I can see is the biggest concern is actually, we're going to be making these properties really valuable by giving them the non-conforming legal use. They're going to have people lining up for these properties is my, my expectation. So if it was just a general building and it sits empty, we all see the W Commercial, Ryan Snow Real Estate signs around town, you know, they can sit there a while. But I think in this case, we, the unintended consequence we're having, and it sounds like we're legally stuck with, is that we're going to be making these properties very valuable. So I think people will be lining up to get them pretty quick. And I do worry that the landlords are going to know how valuable their property is, and they're going to make it uncomfortable for existing tenants so that they can get rid of those tenants and put in somebody that will pay higher rent. So I don't worry about that sixty days being too long. I worry about the other unintended consequences we're going to have.
Thank you.
I I guess the goal was to make it as short as legally possible to try to get rid of the non-conforming uses and get them into the tradition, the standard use permit system.
The the only other way to get rid of the non-conforming uses wasn't a straight-up amortization period based on investment, which is the way, I'll use the best example, billboards have been amortized over years, and you now see very few billboards in California in most areas because they were amortized out of existence.
I have another out-of-the-box question. Could we establish rent control on existing tenants?
I'm going to plead that would need some research. I have no idea off the top of my head.
I mean, that's, that's one way to stop the landlord from driving the price up.
Rent control's a whole nother, like.
I know.
Yeah. Ball of wax, if you will.
It's a different box.
Right. So anyway, that, those were the the competing interests, shorter, I'll call it abandonment period versus a, what I'll call a true amortization period, which essentially said at the end of, fill in blank, you all have to be out of business or obtain a permit. And council direction was to go with a short abandonment period as opposed to an amortization period.
All right. Let's, let's try to move through the rest of these. Nine is just giving notice, which I think is obvious.
Is that writ, by written notice, delivered?
So we did do it as a written notice, and we actually required both the tenant and the landlord to do it for an obvious reason, and the landlord has a disincentive, the tenant, if they've been kicked out, has an incentive.
Right.
So.
Can you specify, put a period of time on it as well? Written notice within a certain number of days or something?
I'll have to look at what we drafted for a second and see whether it's within a specific number of days, but a failure to deliver the notice is presumed, it's been sixty days. I do remember that. So they have some incentive to submit the notice, so they get the full sixty days, because if we figure out they're vacant and they haven't given us notice, then at that point we say, well, it's been sixty days at the time we noticed, because you failed to give the notice.
Number ten, any issue there? Number eleven is just definitions. I think we're on to other things we'd like to add.
Oh, just for clarification, one very specific thing in the ordinance language is Section Six, the conditions of approval. I think if anything, we need to focus our attention on if we were to require a use permit, what specific conditions we require. And if you look at six, A, B, C, D, it talks about hours of operation, things like that. This is where we could actually specifically talk about parking. We could talk about outside of the Plaza District, other sorts of things like ratios of maximum area devoted to seating, restrictions on outdoor seating, things such as, that seems to be an annoyance with some people as tenting the outside and turning it into an interior space. These are the things that we could actually condition in this section.
So we, we also have language in there in the six. It says, shall be subject to the following, that doesn't preclude you from adding additional conditions of approval on each permit as they come through.
It says, any conditions of approval that achieve consistency with general plan and applicable.
So the intention's development code? The intent, these are actually the, the, the one through, or A through F, I take that back, A through E, are currently the provisions in the code where use permits for wine tasting facilities are required. So they all have universal, today, universal, I'll call them conditions, as listed here or primarily as listed here. And then anything else that you have to, that has to, the commission decides in granting the permit could be added on top of those universal conditions. The purpose of the universal conditions, however, is now, if the council follows the commission's recommendation, moot. Because the primary purpose of the universal conditions was to address those uses that didn't need a use permit and were principally permitted, but to impose a certain set of conditions on the principally permitted wine tasting facilities. If none of them are going to be principally permitted on a go-forward basis, then the conditions are whatever you impose when you grant the permit. The only reason to retain those today is so you know what conditions are on those that are already out there without a permit.
I I'd like for us to at least explore that, because it makes, at least establishes a baseline for folks that are coming in, looking to seek a permit, so they know what the the minimum conditions are. And it also helps the commission itself make determinations as opposed to not having any sort of framework. So I I see a value in at least establishing some basic conditions of approval that we think are are applicable, especially like hours of operation.
Then it's, it's fine to leave them as well, either way.
So Commissioner McDonald, if you want to go to F where Veronica was talking about, all activity shall be limited specifically to the activity described in the WTUP. No expansion, enlargement of the area of use, or relocation, reconfiguration of any number of tables, seats. Off-street parking shall be permitted. We could add that in there, because that would then give you the ability to talk about off-street parking specifically.
Yeah, I, I would agree. But for a retail space, say, on Broadway, or a, an office use on Broadway that's outside of the downtown or outside of the, the plaza area, somebody coming in and seeking a use permit where there's only like two parking spaces, abiding up to a residential area, maybe down the street is a church, I would imagine that we should establish a parking standard. Otherwise, we're going to be opening of a hornet's nest without establishing some sort of baseline.
And that's what we'll be doing with our development code update, specifically for that kind of a thing.
So until the zoning code is updated, we would create our own parking requirements on a case-by-case basis. on a case-by-case basis, or?
So the parking, we've talked about this a little bit with the commission previously. We have a couple of, I keep referring to them as code cleanups, that staff has identified over the last twelve months that need to come forward sooner than the comprehensive update. Amendments to the parking ordinance are one of them.
So, so seven would be the best, well, actually, F would be the best we could do until we update the parking codes and loading standards.
Well, and we don't face the issue until we drop below the magic number.
Right, but again, I'm talking about those requirements for, if the council in the future were to require a use permit for all wine tasting rooms outside of the downtown or the Plaza District, then what is the parking standard that we hold that use permit to between now and the time we update our zoning code? Is it the retail rate of one per three hundred? Is it one parking space for every ten seats? What would it be, the restaurant standard, or?
I can only tell you what has happened in the past, because that's all I know. Because staff had been determining that these were all retail uses, they were applying the retail standard relative to parking, as that was the closest applicable standard.
So in our zoning code right now, there's a section in our parking code that says that wine tasting rooms are parked at a rate of one space per three hundred square feet?
There is nothing that, as far as I know, I'll have to look it up, I shouldn't say that. I don't believe it says anything in the parking ordinance about wine tasting facilities.
That's my point.
I think they were applying the general retail rate to parking, too.
That's the de facto for anything that doesn't have something called out?
So without getting into a lot of detail about the parking ordinance, which isn't technically on the agenda tonight, there are a lot of uses that are not listed in the parking ordinance, where staff has historically made an interpretation as to what's the closest use relative to parking requirements. And I'll just leave it there and say, we've got to dig into that ordinance to address this issue.
Well, if the commission feels that we don't need to establish any standard, but move forward with a use permit requirement, I'll keep my mouth shut.
And I won't, because I do want to, I kind of tag on to your comment, though, it's certainly recognized by staff, on the other hand, that in consultation with some of the wine people that I've been talking to, they will argue that for six or seven people come in one car, or two cars for six or seven people when it comes to a wine tasting event, so, or they'll come in a bus, yeah. So, yeah, there's a variation there, and this is a different type of creature than a retail space. I don't even argue that one to three hundred is pretty liberal, you know, should be, perhaps be one to two hundred for retail, as I've seen in other jurisdictions. I've seen some come in at two fifty, so one to three hundred is quite generous.
Or maybe we should just require a parking space for a bus.
I'd like to move on to other things we'd like to add to the ordinance. Anybody want to start in?
I would like to discuss and possibly add, although it's up to, obviously, up to the city council, some sort of, you know, I don't know if sourcing requirement is the right thing, but some sort of provision where we can require that these are Sonoma Valley-based wineries. And I say Sonoma Valley and not Sonoma County, because I know that when this whole issue started a couple of years ago, I believe a new wine tasting room in Sonoma was quoted in the newspaper saying, you know, and they're from Healdsburg, and they had to come down here because it was so, you know, the Healdsburg restrictions were so difficult, they had to come down here. And, and, you know, Sonoma County's very large, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to house tasting rooms from Healdsburg or Windsor or even Cloverdale, really. It should be Sonoma Valley-based, I don't know how to do that.
But the problem is, how do you define Sonoma Valley-based? Because if a person has a business address within the Sonoma Valley, but you don't have any physical facility that you're, where you're making the wine, you're purchasing the fruit, you're going to Custom Crush, so all you have is a physical address. And that establishes you as a Sonoma Valley winery, is that what you want?
Exactly as you described, no.
But that is a potential.
I understand that.
And the other problem was-
Which reveals the complications of the-
And the other problem with sourcing is that especially with a small producer, they may have a flagship wine that they're producing that from Sonoma Valley grapes or Sonoma County grapes that sells for a reasonably large amount of money, and yet to sustain their business model, they've got to have some lower-end product in their stable, which is probably a non-appellation, just a general California appellation. So to say that you have local sourcing is also a bowl of snakes, because that may not fit, that may not support the small winery.
It's just something that perhaps should be explored, and maybe we don't have time for, I mean, because of this time, this ordinance time period, we need, I think this needs to be further explored in phase two of this, because, for example, if we're going to have, if we're going to limit the number, and these existing non-conforming uses, their values go up, I don't want, you know, some large winery from Napa or Healdsburg coming in here, because they are the only people that can afford the rent, basically. That's what I'm trying to avoid. I'm not saying I know how to avoid that yet, but to Commissioner Wellander's point earlier, I'm, I think it's really important to preserve these small Sonoma Valley-based wineries. And I think this is, I view this as the beginning of a process that is yet to be. I mean, in my view, I think it's an important discussion to have, because unchecked, you could create a situation where you have sixty tasting rooms, seventy, and when does, when does it stop with that regulation? If the plaza is sort of a destination for both tourists and locals, we need to create a balance there. But there's just a lot of obviously unintended consequences here, and I don't want the small Sonoma Valley winery to not be able to get on the plaza anymore, because the, you know, the rents are inflated for the-
Does anybody have any ideas? I think, I think it's-
I'm not saying I know how to do it, but.
Saint Helena, that's in their ordinance, seventy-five percent has to be, I think is locally sourced. So there are some cities out there that are doing this, I think we could probably learn what they're doing and what's working and what's not working. I think that obviously will have unintended consequences with that as well, that we might have larger wineries wanting to buy some of our Sonoma Valley wineries, so that they will have some access to the plaza, and that would be a good thing, I wouldn't see that as being such a bad thing. But I do agree with Commissioner Kelso Barnett, I think that we do need to make sure that Sonoma Plaza keeps its local charm, and that it doesn't just become a wine tasting destination for Italian wines or wineries that are not what are, we're here to support our agricultural heritage. So I think that we can find a way to do that, and we'll probably get it wrong on our first attempt, but I think that we should make our intentions clear that that's what we're headed for.
Well, I think the general direction for city council is that we see value in either local sourcing or local Sonoma Valley wineries being the, or having some restriction on one or the other of those things.
Well, I've seen three so far, I can count to three. That'll be the two here and yourself, so, okay, if we can get consensus, then we'll move on.
Do we have consensus?
We can move on.
Do we have four, we have five?
We can forward that to the council. Thank you.
And Commissioner, before you move on to the next issue, I'm needing to go back one to correct myself. The parking ordinance currently does have parking requirements for both wine bars as well as wine tasting facilities. For wine bars, one space for each four seats. For outdoor seating, no off-street parking shall be required for up to twenty-five percent of the approved number of indoor seats. With regard to wine tasting facilities, the current ordinance, relative to parking rates, one space for each three hundred square feet, so that's in keeping with, I think that's why I thought it was using general retail. Of gross sales area, for outdoor seating, no off-street parking shall be required.
Okay, great. That's good, that's good news. I guess my question is now, does the commission feel that I need to make any changes to that, or do we just want to move forward with that for right now and revisit it when we update the zoning code?
What I would suggest, if I could, is not only take the existing code, but add that additional language that I put, that I offered in six F, and that will still kind of wrap it up, belts and suspenders for you, to include that.
Okay. Does everybody feel comfortable that that kind of addresses indoor and outdoor parking and tables? Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anything else that we want to add? I think.
I have one question, I mean, we clearly have a balanced weight towards the type O-two license versus the forty-two. Is that something that we want to put any verbiage around, that we really do want to support the O-two rather than the forty-two, or are we just going to just kind of let that one go?
The, as you were sitting talking about this issue, the only thing that came to mind for me, and please bear with me that I'm, you know, thinking on the fly here, would be whether you wanted to, of the thirty, split them, reserve a specific number for O-two licenses and a specific number for forty-two licenses. Yeah, that's, or let the forty-twos go all together and just address the twos.
I'm trying to remember, somewhere I thought I saw language that the type forty-two, you have to have something where you don't have an overabundance of, or overconcentration of type forty-twos. I can't remember where I saw that.
The, that's not in our regulations, although it is in the regulations relative to the issuance of a use permit. So an overconcentration is one of your UP findings, or TUP findings.
So that becomes academic, then we can limit it with the use permit.
Theoretically, when the use permit comes forward, you could say, no, we think we have enough, fill-in-blank, forty-twos.
And since we have more than the maximum number right now, we don't face it until we have a new use permit.
And a member of the public spoke to the question of, it's not really about the license, it's about the use. I do agree with that, I think we got caught up in the licensing provisions, however, because that's how we currently permit them. So it became difficult to sort of jettison the, what type of permit does it have, when that's what we have out there now, is based on what type of ABC permit does it have. Again, when we come back for refinements and start talking about other ways to address this ordinance and live with it for a little while and see how it operates, we may revisit that question and tie it to a more classical land use definition than tying it to the type of permit.
So at this point, are we willing to make a motion to approve the resolution of what we've discussed tonight, in addition to what has been included in the packet? It's going to be a little difficult to tie all this down.
Mr. Chair, we have resolution four, two thousand nineteen, as amended by your discussion.
Okay.
I hate to elongate this conversation, but one additional question that you had mentioned at the start and then didn't circle back to was the question of square footage limitation. Did that pretty much come off the table during your discussion, or did you want to revisit that question?
Well, I think the, obviously, the nature of the space in question is going to dictate the footage. So, and, and I think perhaps it's adding a level of complication we're not ready to deal with right now, because this gets back to Commissioner Wellander's question about, what about a large space which could be made available to three or four small wineries to be able to share that space under a master lease from one tenant? And obviously, setting square footage maximums is kind of irrelevant when you've got fixed spaces, so I'm willing to pass on that.
I'd like to add, that was probably one of the reasons why I was harping on parking so much, because I was trying to avoid creating limitations in terms of size, so I believe as long as we have some definition of parking, it kind of almost at least limits the size to a certain extent, so that's, I feel comfortable moving forward without a size limitation.
I think I'm seeing consensus to just move forward without that.
So this resolution will be amended per discussion before goes to the city council?
Yes, and that includes the typos that you were able to point out for us as well, as well as the content stuff.
So I'm looking for someone to make a motion to approve this resolution.
I will move to approve resolution four, two thousand nineteen, as amended and noted by staff.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wellander?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett?
Yes.
Chair Felder?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, six to zero.
I would like to take a five-minute recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order, please. So we will then move to item number eight, comments from the commission, as we had agreed to in our revised agenda.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelso Barnett.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up just a brief comment. We now have a new planning commission, or a reconstituted planning commission, and so at least the group of us will be together for at least the next two, you know, possibly, depending on how things work out, a lot of you guys will be here for four years. And we're sort of embarking upon this period of time in our city's history where we have a general plan update, we have a UGB expiration coming up very soon. And this question and these comments is sort of inspired by the city council meeting from last week, where I believe they are embarking upon this process where they're going to have a housing workshop, where they're going to have, like, town halls, and they're— they have this whole contract with, you know, just this housing workshop, which to me seems— obviously, there's good intentions behind that, and I guess I support that. But to me, that struck me as like, what would generally be part of a general plan update process, where we—you know, you form a general— from what I understand, when you update a general plan, you have a general plan advisory committee, you have stakeholders from the community on that, like from Chamber of Commerce, and from, you know, the Visitors Bureau, and also from, you know, affordable housing advocates, and I mean, you just have the whole— all the stakeholders there. You look at issues of housing, you also look at issues of economic development that we just discussed in the past agenda item. And I'm just wondering, because I swear to God, we have talked about this general plan for the last two years. We've talked about the urban growth boundary for about a year, and nothing is going on about that. And—or it doesn't seem—it doesn't appear, from my perspective, that there isn't much progress, and I understand there's a lot, obviously, on the plate. And so, I would like to see two things. One, what the rest of— like, for example, if we're going to have—and this was what I thought was supposed to happen—if we're going to have a ballot initiative for the UGB or something, that has to be on the ballot by next year, like, what is the timing for that? What is—does that come before a general plan update? Are they done concurrently? And so I was just curious to see if, you know, by the next meeting, or maybe the meeting after that, if we could have some sort of, like, what is the game plan? When it comes to the general plan, the urban growth boundary, does that come for— I was always under the impression you establish an urban growth boundary first, whatever it is, whether it's the same one or a new one, and then you respond to general plan to that. Am I making any sense?
You are, I just think—rather than getting to it—I think you're asking to agendize an item, so that we could at least have a discussion about this.
Well, I'm just saying, I would love to have, like, a piece of paper that said, "May 2019, kickoff X." It just seems like we're doing this housing workshop, where we're having all these town halls, and I always thought that was part of a general plan update. And I'm wondering, is that in place of a general plan update, or—
So, the general plan is a series of elements, as you're aware. The housing element isn't due to be updated yet, and I think the council is trying to, from a policy perspective, get in front of that conversation, and maybe make some inroads into the creation of a policy that the council wants to endorse, and it wants information for that—for those purposes in advance. And David, do you—
Yeah. At the commission meeting, at the last commission meeting, I did report to the commission the action of the city council in the expenditure and hiring Urban Green. And clearly, the council, who has a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee, talking about—a housing subcommittee, excuse me, are talking about that very thing. And so when we do that first public workshop, we will be talking about all the different components, and how those things dovetail into a broader housing policy and general plan update process. But you are correct, there is a voter initiative there, if you will, to amend it, and that will come at the tail end, or at the back end, of perhaps a more broader discussion. The council will be discussing what components of the general plan need to be touched. And as Veronica was saying, we have a housing element that goes to 2022. We've just updated a circulation element a year or so ago that may still need to be amended, to deal with things like VMT and other things like greenhouse gases. And so, there's a variety of pieces that we need to kind of put together in a package before we start that journey.
Okay. Because I seem to remember that the city council budgeted half a million dollars for the general plan, like, last year.
And that is—that is correct.
Okay.
And that doesn't—that will probably buy half an EIR right now.
And is there a—is there, at this point, any—since I think what Commissioner Kelso Barnett is getting at, is there actually a timetable that has been developed for the general plan update process, et cetera?
No, I believe that will be coming back to the council, because as we've had a discussion, again, we're getting dangerously towards a conversation. We're getting a little bit far out on the plank, but I can tell you that we are discussing that internally with staff, with respect to updating the development code, which, in talking with some of you, is probably more important than actually adopting changes to the general plan, not with respect to housing, however. So we do need to have that, and maybe we should agendize that for another discussion.
I think we should agendize it.
Perhaps at this point, what we need to do is just get—that's where I thought you were going, was asking for an agenda item, so that staff could give you what information they have.
I think I'd like to take it one step further, and agendize not only what's happening to date, but also what the process, staff envisions, not locking them into a process, but what is it that we would expect in making all this happen? Not necessarily pinpointing dates, but looking at the progression of events that need to be taking place, the stakeholders that are a part of those—that process, and—because I think we need to get going, at least on—under—for this commission to understand what the process is going to be, not necessarily pinpointing specific dates, and who needs to be involved, and how long is it going to take?
I think we have a need for an agenda item.
There we go. Thank you.
Any other commission comments at this point? We can also do it at the end of the meeting, so if you feel inclined, we can wait. With that, we are going to move back to item 5.2, and I want to thank those people in the audience who have been very patiently waiting for this item to be heard, and as you can see, there's a lot of things going on in this city that need our attention, and so we appreciate you being tolerant of that. With that, we will have a continued public hearing to consider and possibly adopt a resolution relating to the expiration of a use permit for the previously approved Sonoma Cheese Factory Development Project at 2 West Spain Street, that was issued in May of 2004 by the Planning Commission.
Chair, I have to recuse myself from this item.
Yes.
And the previous, the—
Point one.
4.1 as well.
Yeah, we're going to do—yeah.
Due to proximity, I live too close to that.
Thank you. And before—you know, before we move into 5.2, we're going to go back to 4.1 and have a discussion of what the late correspondence is relating to this item.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we received communication from Mr. Icar and Mr. Conforti, and I believe you received that in your packet, and by email, number one, and then also tonight, delivered by the clerk.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to the Planning Director for your staff report.
Yes, you may have noticed the absence of a written staff report, and you'll probably notice that it's going to be little evidence of an oral report. Your commission continued the item tonight to allow the applicant additional time to provide materials for your review. That concludes staff's report.
Questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open it up for a public hearing, where the applicant would like to come up and address this.
Good evening.
Please state your name and—
Maria Viviani, 2 Spain Street. Good evening again, thanks for hearing us. So, as we left it on Thursday, we're here today at your request to come back with some evidence and some supporting documents. The question was if—that you would give us clarity and ratify our 2004 plan. We've been using the space continuously under this entitlement for 15 years, and so we have some additional proof of work performed that was leading towards a multi-use tenant marketplace. We went back to our archives and dug through everything, and we came up with some plans and permits to support our position. Before I give those to you, and I don't know how you want to look at them, but—because there are plans that are rolled up, and I have the permits, I wanted to talk about three things. One is, on a proposal from Mr. Dimick, from March 2004, March 29, 2004, page three, this was a document that was used to come to a decision on the approval. It says on the first paragraph, "As shown in the attached master site plan drawing, the owner also proposes to build out the undeveloped portions of the site on a demand basis." We keep saying that this was a progressive movement towards building out the building, so that particular line also shows that it was going to be on a demand basis, so as, you know, financially it was doable, economically it was doable, those spaces would be developed further down the line. Second one is on page one of your conditions of project approval from May 13, 2004, on the first page, item one, section A, "A maximum of nine tenant spaces shall be allowed within the structure." So it just indicates that up to nine tenants could be in the structure at a time. It could be one, it could be three, it could be six, or it could be nine, but no more. Then, there's one more, page two, on the project analysis of the City of Sonoma Planning Commission staff report of May 13, 2004. Second paragraph, on the reuse of existing space, there's a line that says, "The property owner is proposing to devote the entire building to retail use subdivided into as many as nine tenant spaces with access via a central corridor. Other prospective tenants have not yet been identified." So there was—there's evidence that the Planning Commission understood that the space would be developed over time on an as-needed basis. And we have a master plan that shows, like, section A, section B, and section C, and section A was the first phase of that development. And what we are wanting to do to go forward is to go into section B and C, and we feel that we have the entitlements to do so. I have five documents. One is the 2004 master plan, the second one is the 2005 tenant improvements, number three is the 2005 electrical improvements, 2005 HVAC improvements, and in 2011, a major electrical upgrade to the switchgear, which serves the whole building. So I have those plans and permits for you to review, and I feel that they're very supporting and showing that it may have taken a long time, that the intention was to renovate the building in a section-by-section basis, and we are moving towards that. 2011 shows a major upgrade in the switchgear to support multi-tenant space. It has a large amperage, large service, and right now, what we want to do is just continue working in that direction. So I would like to show you the plans that I have, I don't know how you'd like to receive them, or if there's an ability to show them on an overhead screen, or if you'd like to just look at them.
What slide?
They're legal sizes.
24 by 36s.
They're like full breed, 24 by 36.
What specifically do these plans show, other than what the master plan that we had in our packet showed?
Okay. Number one. So number one is— and this can be put on the overhead.
Through the chair, is it possible to coordinate these plans with the actual building permits that you submitted to us, so we know which ones go with which plan?
I have all the building permits with the plans.
Right, the ones that staff gave us. I just want to make sure that they're all the same.
This is what was—has already been in the packet.
Right, this is the Dimick sketch, which we saw last meeting, and with this corridor down the center, which—so this looks to me to be what we've already seen in the packet.
I think what you wanted more clarity on, Commissioner Barnett, was you wanted to see something that showed more discreet areas, and the black-and-white version that you have, I think, doesn't really depict it to its, you know, its full glory, because you see that there's— you see that there's shaded areas, and I've put in sections 1, 2, 3, 4, so you could see the sections that were identified as a potential nine-tenant space use of the building, and then I indicated on the hashed marks, those are proposed additions that were denied, and they were never done. So, I just wanted to clarify that those are, you know, denied portions of a remodel or addition. I felt that the colored version was more indicative of what I was trying to explain to you, and, you know, you wanted to see a little more detail on the plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, number two would be the 2005 tenant improvements drawing. I don't know how to show them to you, but, I have the original stamped and reviewed by the city, with the corresponding building permits, the original building permits.
Oh, I know the permits right here, not the original.
Well, you can all, you can show the stamp, second spot on the permits.
This would be the plan that you have, you've received a day, like, the 17034 up here?
Uh-huh.
And what's also been presented are, again, versions of the same permit, 17034 up here. You've seen that? This is, again, this has been PDFed, again, you see the 1734, and I'm assuming, this looks like it's page 5 or 5, up there, right there, I'm not sure what this relates to. It's kind of hard from this sheet to see what this relates to, something structural, it's not electrical at this point.
Oh, structural calculations for tenant improvement.
Yeah.
Does tenant improvement store expand?
It's hard to tell if this picture here relates to these particular permits, I don't know how we've connected.
Oh, if they're tied together?
The stamp, yeah, I don't know if it relates, you know, we can look at the dates, but I don't, I don't know what ties this to the 17034. That'll be the only question I have. There's four other sheets, I think, somewhere else.
It's for the removal of the wall between, like, the existing store and into the new retail space of section A, which is basically 3 and 4 on that master plan.
Right, and so, if I can, this particular area here was part, not a part of the original permit, because this was the existing retail space, that's, excuse me, this was the retail space.
1 and 2.
And then this was 2450 square feet that we believe 17034 belongs, it belongs to.
Yeah, section 3 and 4.
Well, area A.
Area A.
Right.
So, area A was what was accomplished on 2005, with the structural improvements, the removal of the wall, and 2005, we have the electrical documents and permitting to improve the electrical demo, old factory electrical, and create electrical outlets and provisions for at least section A.
So, Maria, if you could just help David here, because I walked with the property with you.
Yeah.
Area A is that area that we went to behind the front portion of the store, correct?
It's really obvious on those.
Okay. Do you want to put that up there?
Can you pull that?
Sorry, we have them in large format.
You got the picture?
Yep.
Which one went down? No, you're good. Because I have it right now, so, with my finger, limits of this project, and there is a heavy dotted line around area A.
And this, and this plan relates to what work?
17034. Yeah, 17034, that's the one Maria just gave us, the first one.
And what was the, what, what was this, what was this work? Was there actual improvement to this space?
Well, it was a factory in that area.
Right.
It was the original floor of the cheesemaking operation, so it all had to be demoed. It was, you know, concrete flooring, so, you know, it had to be made into a space that would be complimentary to a retail area. So, there was a removal of a wall to open up the store from the front section to the section A. It was removal of electrical, piping, plumbing, and addition of HVAC unit to provide, you know, heating and cooling in that area. It was to do electrical along the outside walls for utilities, and it was, what was that? Lighting, so they had to do lighting in that area, sorry. They had to do lighting in that area, because before it was just a factory floor, so they had to do, you know, complimentary lighting for a retail space. So, all of those improvements are showing a direction in developing that area, at least section A, into a space that would provide a space to be able to put, you know, multiple tenants, at least a few multiple tenants.
And what was the approximate cost of that improvement?
I have some documents that indicate it was at least $175,000, but if I could have more time digging, I think it was closer to $450,000.
Is the, the building permit states that the estimated cost was, the project was $70,000.
That would be on, that would just be on the first one, the 17034.
Yeah.
And so, you'll see that, excuse me, if you look at the valuation, of the permit valuation, which they base the fee on, you'll see that down at about $161,000. Again, that was just on this one particular proposal. How they get to an evaluation, a permit valuation, as opposed to the estimated project costs, those are two different numbers.
Okay.
And again, again, on this one here that Maria's talking about, you'll see there, there's where you see the 2450, which is the size of area A.
And can you clarify for me why, why you're defining this as a movement towards the creation of the multiple tenant spaces, since it appears to be an interior remodel, I can warrant that, but there's been, throughout this period, there was no creation of the passageway, it's now been, you know, turned into one open space, and, and to the extent to which we're looking at this plan that you had colored in, but which is the same as this one, as basically the development plan of 2004. What, what's not clear to me is, is the, the movement towards this, if we can call it a plan, in, I'm still not seeing a terribly clear connection between what you're describing as the work done and the creation of a multi-tenant space. I'm still seeing basically interior improvements for a single tenant.
I can see why you would think that, but we had the option of going up to nine tenants, and as said in Mr. Dimick's letter, his proposal letter, that we would build out the undeveloped portions of the site on a, on a demand basis. So, as demand increased or finances were made available, that area would be developed, and that would be B and C. So...
Well, I understand that, it's...
Flash forward to number 5, which is 2011, we did a major electrical upgrade to the switchgear, and that needed to be done in order to support, you know, expanding out into B and C. So, we put a full, brand-new service in, 1,000 amp service, and I do have the documents that you wanted to see, it wasn't Peterson Electrical, it was Voltaire Electrical Company. So, I have the permits on that, and exactly what kind of work they did, and in Voltaire's letter, he even indicates that that space, or that switchgear, was installed with the intention of adding multi, multi-tenant space or multiple shops within the building. So, they installed a switchgear that would allow for individual metering if we needed that. We only had one meter installed at this point, but there's the option to install further meters, and there's even unused circuits at this point that can be activated.
Maria, I've just put it up on the overhead for you.
Oh, great. This is from Voltaire. As you can see, it says, "There's been some discussion of possibly, of the possibility of several smaller shops in the building. It's time to consider elements required to do so, and then decide whether to add multiple metering to the new electrical switchgear." Because we have the option of just having one meter, and if we were to develop a, like an open floor plan, a public market space, we may consider just doing, you know, one meter and having it be like a, like a common space that people would contribute money towards the use of whatever electricity they use and be part of their lease.
What, what did you end up doing, one meter or multiple?
We have one meter now, because we hadn't decided if we wanted to do multiple meters or not. If we do an open floor plan, it may not be feasible to do multiple meters, and the reason we want to do an open floor plan is to allot for the expansion to nine and the reduction down in tenants, because some people, you know, they can't, they can't run a business or their business fails, they need to give up their lease and leave, and a tenant that's adjacent may do well and want to expand into that area, so it gives a, an option for the tenants that are currently there to be able to expand or contract. And it's very common for that to be happening in, in most shopping malls, if it's mixed use, they may have, you know, five or six shops, one may do really well, one may not do very well, the one that goes out, the one next door may want to expand into that area, and it would be an option for them. So, we considered doing the individual metering, but the one meter was an option that would allow for that common space.
So, and this relates to this Voltaire work? The new panel?
Yeah, Voltaire was the contractor that we used to do the work.
Yeah.
And it appears from the job plan, which we can put on the, that this work was actually done in area C, not A, and, and it was, it's labeled as meter main replacement.
I have a question about the PEGNE connection, so, does the electric come in from the back or from the front?
From the back.
From the back. So, area C would be the place where you would do the work regardless?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
We also set it up so that in the future, if it needed to go underground, we had the option to go underground. There's been talk with the state about taking down that power pole.
Anything, anything else to bring forth?
That's all I have right now.
Okay.
I thought I did pretty good.
I have a couple of questions, maybe. Do you have any documentation at all from the fire department with respects to upgrades to fire sprinklers, or anything from the fire department that can pinpoint occupancy of this building?
I didn't think to look for that, but I could, I could look for something like that, unless the city has a way of helping me. Oh, it was?
It says that...
Okay, so I guess it was part of the original plan, when the sprinklers went in, and there are sprinklers installed.
You have the 17034 again?
It's right here.
Oh, there we go. I should have the fire sign off on it.
Yeah, it does. Fire Department sign off 6205.
Does it say whether sprinklers is required?
It does on the plans themselves.
So, right here.
And here's the...
So, is fire sprinkler system required, fire inspection required, yes.
So, there was a 2 for, for that question, the other is the occupancy, the fire marshal establishing an occupancy for space and exiting, trying to establish the fact that this is a much larger plan to build out a larger space and creating capacity for multi-tenants? I'm trying to establish that. Is this something that the fire marshal established when he issued and signed his permit?
I think he would have been looking at the 2450 square feet and the permits that are required for that, and in this case, he signed off on the occupancy for that particular piece of geography.
But not beyond that?
This permit only pertains to the 2,450 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
That I'm aware of. It's the other permit that we're talking about that has the electrical in area C, and there would have been a sign off for that, too.
I think my question was answered, I believe that the fire sprinklers and the occupancy was established for the 2,400 square feet as a capacity. Not beyond.
Oh, if your, if your presentation of additional materials is complete, I've got some, some questions I'd like to ask.
Wait, she has one more document she's gonna look at, and that was, that's the, all the electrical work that was done.
Okay.
The 2005 electrical plans and building permit.
This, this shows that for an electrical permit, you don't actually have any occupancy requirements, and that's why there's no signatures required on either side here. See, right here, where it says use approval occupancy?
It goes down the line, into, into beginning B.
Where's the, where's the A versus B? Could you put the A versus B thing back up there?
Yeah.
What we're seeing here is this protrusion. This, this would appear to be the wall.
It's my fault.
Yes, I'm just here. So if I could just have you focus here for a minute? See, I figured it out. Here is... There's a cowl where in that here, women's room, and then a men's room. See this electrical going to here? So if you just can focus on the women's and the men's. Here's the same women's and the men's, so it appears to have gone to a portion of here, the electrical.
The 2,011, um, uh, switchgear was a, was an important step that we had to take to be able to continue doing any work into B and C, because those, um, those areas are going to need, you know, the power requirement is there. With how this switchgear looked, um, after 2,006, it was going to support that. So that's why, um, that step was taken in 2,011, 2,012, is to move towards moving, uh, developing, uh, B and C. So that switchgear work was to encompass the entire building, not just Section A.
Done questions?
No, I have some questions.
Well, go ahead.
Well, okay, uh, thank you for, for that information. I, I, from the very beginning of this hearing, not tonight, but starting on Thursday, there's been, uh, a high degree of confidence indicated on the part of the applicant that you have fully vested rights in the conditional use permit that was done in 2,004. My question is, if you are that confident, why are you here?
Well, I didn't want to be surprised. I didn't want to pull a building permit only to be stopped, you know, mid-renovation. I wanted, with all the problems that we had, um, earlier and years past, I wanted to have a degree of, of transparency with you. So I wanted to come before you, say, "This is what we're going to do." It, it satisfies a lot of the problems that were identified in an earlier plan. Um, it satisfies in not changing the building, not changing the exterior, staying in a smaller footprint, um, but also allowing us to progress forward in our business by making improvements to the building. I mean, obviously, you know it needs it. Um, so I thought that it would be a good move to come before you and to, to show you what the plan is going forward. We would like to continue on in that direction and go with the 2,004 plan, because it satisfies a lot of the concerns of the community, especially our neighbors.
Well, in the, in that spirit of transparency, I'm going to ask you a few other questions. Are you working with Mr. Carlin's company on a development plan for this project?
Is that important to you?
Of course it is.
Okay, um, yes.
Yes, okay.
He is, he is a partner of mine.
Okay, so the plan is that they will either, uh, partner with you, or end up leasing the property, or, or, uh, purchase, or have some ownership, or whatever it might be. You're, you're marching along into the future with that developer?
Yes.
Okay. That's important to have on the table, and it hasn't been mentioned on Thursday? And unless I ask tonight, it hasn't been brought up. Now, wait. Here's the part of this issue of transparency that's bothering me. And I don't know if the rest of the commissioners are going to be aware of this. But Mr. Carlin has met with, individually, or spoken on the telephone privately, with at least four out of the five members of the city council about this nine, uh, tenant plan. That makes me very uncomfortable. Hold on.
It was actually me.
Okay, it was you?
Yes.
Yes, and that makes...
I needed direction. I needed direction on, what, what do I do to go forward?
Let me finish.
If this is okay, go to the planning commission.
I understand that you've gone to the planning commission, but, but you ended up presenting a concept for a, a nine-tenant proposal in, in partnership with Mr. Carlin to, to the city council before it even came to this commission. Now, as far as I'm concerned, that is highly irregular. The city council is the body that, if you don't like our decision, that hears that matter on appeal. And at the last meeting on Thursday night, your attorney basically said, "We want you to go ahead and deny it tonight, and we'll just take it to the city council." And that further my senses of discomfort. Do you understand why?
Not particularly.
Do you see how it looks?
No.
You don't? Well, I'll spell it out for you. The way it looks from up here is that we're being played at the planning commission. That you've got a developer, and you can tell me I'm right or wrong. You've got a developer who's told you, "You better nail down your rights on this project, or I'm not going to put any money in it." And you had better get your permit clarified. And, and we're going to go and we're going to talk to the members of the city council to see if we've got things lined up for an approval. So don't worry about the planning commission. You have not been straightforward with this commission. It makes me feel disrespected, and it makes me feel played. And it, and I don't enjoy having a cat-and-mouse game with an applicant. These are all things that you could have said to us on Thursday night, but it didn't happen. And not only that, there's an appeal pending, which you have not yet withdrawn. And I will tell you that the combination of that appeal remaining, even though you're making this case that you're moving ahead on this ninth, uh, uh, nine-tenant plan, and that you're not, you haven't made any firm commitment, that you're dropping the, uh, the other plan, you haven't withdrawn the application, I haven't heard your attorney say it, I haven't heard you say it. Something's being held back for a reason, I don't know what it is, that doesn't feel good. And I'm, at this point, extremely uncomfortable about what's happened and, and what I learned about the, um, discussions that you've had with the city council. I would like to know what was presented to the city council, what they were shown, what they were told. I would like to have city staff have an opportunity, and the city attorney have an opportunity, to talk to the members of the city council and find out.
Go ahead.
And I would like to, once again, and I'm going to make this as a motion, to continue this item until we have an opportunity to bring all these matters forward and have some clarity about what the role of this commission is on this project at this point. Because I don't feel like, like, playing a, a silly dance here. There's, the, the conditions of approval from 2,004 are a joke. There's nothing there. In 2,015, the conditions of approval were four pages long. I came up with a, a, a page of projected conditions of approval that has at least 25 or 30 items on it. This is the way projects get done. They don't get done by saying the project is approved, and the only condition of approval is it gets developed the way the applicant's narrative described it. And the, and the applicant's narrative in 2,004 said, "We've got some kind of plan. We, we don't really have a definitive plan." And I asked your attorney last Thursday, "Do you have a plan?" I, I can't quote her precisely, but it was something to the effect of, "We don't have a plan." Well, you're here tonight saying you do have a plan. Do you understand how this feels? It feels like I'm being jerked around.
I'm sorry you feel that way. It doesn't, it's not my intention. My intention is, I feel that I have an entitlement, the entitlement runs with the land. We own the land. We should have the, uh, the benefit of those entitlements. They've been improved upon, they've been perfected. We saw evidence of going in that direction.
Let me just, let me just respond in one second. You're absolutely right. And the problem is, is that we're in the process of basically codifying a nine-tenant shopping center that runs with the land. It doesn't, it's not a Viviani project forever. It, it, it isn't, we're not giving it to you, we're granting something to the land. It's going to be here forever. If Mr. Carlin does well with it, and you do well with it, terrific. The fact of the matter is, the irony of, of this bizarre process that we're going through here is that I believe if this came forward as a real application today for a nine-tenant space, outlined the way you want it, but fleshed out with the kind of conditions of approval that any project demands and requires today, that the community actually deserves, it would probably get a very favorable reception. Instead, we've been given half a story on Thursday. And, and, and I, I don't know why this, why we're playing this game. You say you want to, you want to do this in a transparent way. You want to do it in a transparent way, drop your other application. Bring forward a proposal, indicate a willingness to sit down and talk about some real conditions of approval that you'd be willing to accept. We can't force them on you. Take a look at this thing as a real project, look at the parking, look at the number of seats, look at the outdoor number of seats, look at the, look at the landscape plans, look at all the things that get done. Talk about whether there's going to be live music allowed, talk about whether there's going to be exterior sound, talk about the coordination with state parks, all the things that a plan, of course, would include. None of which I would expect you would object to. You might say, "Well, that's not really enough seats," or this, that, and the other. But that's what a normal development process includes. Somehow or other, we've been locked in to a 2,004 plan that, that's forcing us to, to approve something with no flesh on the bones, other than you're saying, "Well, we're planning on doing something, but your attorney says we don't know what it is." That's crazy!
It's not crazy, because we have these entitlements. Why would I go back to ground zero when I already have the entitlements in place?
Well, you know, you may not... You may not have the entitlements.
We feel we demonstrate that we do.
I, I know you do, and that's why I said, I don't, I'm not really sure why you decided to take the, the attack you did. You don't want to be surprised, but the fact of the matter is, is that this commission may decide you have not fulfilled it, that is, that it basically does not verify the entitlements you think you do. And then you said, your attorney said you're going to go appeal it to the city council, the very people who appointed everybody up here.
I know.
And hoping that they're going to somehow reverse our decision. They may not.
It's a chance I have to take, but there's only going to be one plan, obviously. It's either going to be a 2,004 plan, or it's going to be a 2,017 plan.
In, in, in the interest of transparency, why are, if, if you really believe this is the way, way forward, why are you so reluctant to withdraw the application for the 2017, 2018 plan?
If I can answer that, Chair Felder, the issue is this. This question before you this evening, just like it was the same question before you on Thursday evening, is just to confirm staff's determination that this use permit has been in effect since 2,004. Fifteen years the space has been occupied. Nobody had an issue with it. So for planning commission to turn around and conflate the two actions to take the 2017 appeal that's pending, because people can't live with a bigger public market, and use that as an excuse to try to get some confirmation here...
Wait a minute, the, the planning commission approved the use permit in 2018. So why are you coming back to the planning commission and telling us that you want clarity on, on, on this other permit, which would be trumped by the 2018 permit?
Because the 2018 permit was appealed, right? The question we have brought before you, based on the city's municipal code, is for confirmation that the 2,004 use permit, which this planning commission issued, I realize it's different people, but it was the planning commission made the determination. It had sufficient evidence, sufficient findings to support that determination. Now, all of a sudden, there's a question as to whether it's valid when the space has been occupied for 15 years? If that is infested rights, based on the case law, I don't know what is. And so then to turn around and say, "We must withdraw the 2018 approval" that's now been appealed as the basis to get a determination for the validity of an action taken by the planning commission 15 years ago, is unreasonable. The two are not related. We will withdraw that 2018 application once we have some confirmation that, darn it, this use permit is in fact in effect, as it has been for 15 years. That's why we're confident, frankly, that the courts would uphold this, because the courts have upheld similar situations where space has been occupied based on decisions and inspections and permits issued upon which substantial work has been performed. And that's why to ask this applicant at this time, who's just asking a simple question, to have to then withdraw an application for a totally different application, makes no sense to us. And it seems that they're being put in the position to have to waive their right for an action they took forward to this planning commission. With all due respect, it just seems unreasonable. They have to give that up at this point when they can't even get confirmation that staff's determination is in fact supportable based on the law. And all we ask is just to confirm that the law supports this. And I'm sorry if I sound frustrated by this, but these poor people have been at this for years. I mean, you ask why they only have one tenant, one anchor tenant, living in that space, using that space? They have modified the space to make it look like a public market. They bring in local vendors to try to sell the products there, so they don't have eight tenants, because they can't make the space viable right now without doing the improvement, spending money to demonstrate substantial work on that use permit. And to then be told, "Well, you can't proceed with a plan to try to expand the space, which was contemplated in the 2,004 use permit, and then the planning commission said, 'Well, that isn't good enough. You have to come back to us.'" You're basically telling them that they can't do anything with the space, and that's not why we came here.
I don't believe that's what we're telling you. But we, we, we have a use permit that's been granted, that's under appeal, and it's been under appeal for going on eight months, which is not a timely fashion, according to our code, for that appeal to be heard. And quite frankly, uh, in the spirit of Commissioner Barnett's motion, uh, to continue, it seems to me that we have been backed into a corner where we're in an untenable situation as well. And the, the proper motion I would like to see is that this item is continued until that, that, uh, appeal that is currently, before the city council is settled.
And upon what basis would that recommendation be made?
Because it has precedence, because it's been, uh, under appeal for a period of eight months, which is, which is an inordinate, uh, time period for that to be languishing. months, which is, which is an inordinate time period for that to be languishing in that state. It should be settled once and for all, so we can move forward. And for you to, if we were to come through and say that we don't, we can't act to, to give you vested rights on this one, and you're, and you're going to put another appeal in front of city council, which to me would have to be subordinate to the first one anyway, that it makes no sense to carry two appeals forward. Get the first appeal settled, and then move on to what you want to do with this permit.
Chair Felder, with all due respect, that's not what the law says. The law says that that 2004 use permit has been vested.
No, the law says, the law says that in order to have vested rights, the property owner does not acquire that vested right to construct improvements under a specific land use classification, which is a shopping center for that property, until the developer has obtained, first, a valid building permit, and, two, performed substantial work and incurred substantial liabilities in good faith reliance on the permit. Now, everything we've seen, yes, you've spent money, yes, there's been improvements to the property, but has that been done in good faith reliance on the permit that you got permission to act on?
Yes, sir, it has.
There has not been a single new tenant added to that building since 2004.
You're correct, and there is a good reason for that. The reason is that that use permit contemplated that the cheese factory would be the anchor tenant. They have been using the space as the anchor tenant. They have been selling cheese, they've been selling wine, they've been selling other products there...
You did not need that use permit to be the anchor tenant.
Understood. But Mr. Viviani had a vision to use that space and to turn it into a public market. And so he started implementing those improvements, as we've indicated, in order to make that happen. I am sorry that they don't have another tenant right now. They're trying to make this work as it is. And they're trying to convert, or have converted that space from a manufacturing facility into the, you know, into a retail space, into a, a public market. So that use permit didn't say you must have nine tenants. It said you may have a maximum of nine tenants.
And a minimum of three.
It didn't say a minimum of three in the use permit.
That's the definition of a shopping center.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, that's not what this use permit said. It didn't say it's a shopping center.
This use permit doesn't say anything, that's the problem.
Well, I understand your frustration with that, but the Planning Commission, who made the decision on the 2004 use permit, was able to get to a point where they could actually approve the use permit as allowing that use. The use itself has occupied the space. I realize you'd like to see nine tenants or six tenants, but that's not what was mandated by the use permit.
But I don't believe that the process, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if I can jump in here. I don't believe the process, as you've described it, is accurate. What happened was, there was a two-part application made to the Planning Commission in 2004. Part one was approved. Part two received no action at all, but in order for the mandate of part one to be fulfilled, there had to be part two. And it didn't happen. And it's never happened. There's been no structural additions to the building. The hallway that's on the plan is, is basically fronting on a vacant space, and your argument doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, convince me. All of that aside, I'm still concerned about the process. And I'm not prepared tonight to try to adjudicate, and this is a quasi-judicial regulatory body here, we have a role mandated and, and assigned by the state to apply and determine the appropriateness of the land use laws in the city of Sonoma for the benefit of the community. Not just the benefit of the, of the landowner, or the, but the, to the benefit of the community. And I'm not about to abrogate that responsibility because of poor decision-making in the past. And, and I am certainly not comfortable moving ahead until I know what the discussions with the city council have been about this project, which have taken place over a period of time. And why didn't you mention those meetings when we met on Thursday? Didn't you think that was relevant? When you said, "Appeal it to the city council"? You could have said, "By the way, we've met with the city council." I'm, I'm shocked.
Commissioner Barnett, the reason I didn't say anything is that the plans that have been submitted were the 2004 plans that were discussed. And I know you have a problem with the 2004 plans, but the Planning Commission approved the 2004 plan.
What does that have to do with meeting with the body that, that you told me to, that, that you told this commission you were then going to turn to if we, if we just turned it down? What, what does that have to do with the process that you engaged in, that this applicant engaged in? Do you understand how it looks? It looks really bad.
I, I understood, I understand your concern. All I am commenting on is that we posed a discreet question to this body. We haven't been able to get an answer to this question. It seems that this body wants to continue talking about it or reviewing it, and I understand that. We need, we need to make a decision. And that's why I said that if you are uncomfortable making a decision about this discreet question we posed to you, that we would then go ahead. If you're going to deny the application, then we would appeal it to the council. We have, we have to get to a final agency action. You're not giving us much of a choice here.
Yes, but you have, you have also treated this commission in a shabby fashion.
Well, that was not our intent, and we certainly haven't done that, because we voluntarily came before this commission to be transparent and ask a question. We could have actually, it probably would have been easier to file a building permit application, as Maria indicated, just go ahead and do it. And then you would have been faced with, the potential people would be, you know, wondering what was going on at the cheese factory.
Well, everybody's going to be wondering what's going on anyway, because there's no plan. And yes, I agree, you could have done that. And you could still do that. You could walk out of here today and do that, which is why I raised the initial question. But I don't think your investor is going to allow you to do that, because you're going to have to make some warranties, and you're going to have to indemnify your partners, that the warranties you make are correct, and that you are actually in, in possession of the rights and privileges that you said that you've got. Doesn't that sound right?
Mr. Barnett, this decision was made by the landowner.
Commissioner Barnett, I'm going to give a chance for some other people up here to speak, and then we haven't opened this up to public comment as well. But if you have a question of the applicant, Commissioner Wellander?
I don't have a specific question at this point, but I will have some specific comments when you bring it back to...
Yeah, I, I think what I'll do with that, if we don't want to keep questioning the applicant, I, I need to open this up to the public comment. So if anyone from the public cares to speak on this item, you may approach.
It seems that everyone here has the same goal, that the applicants can create a revitalized Sonoma cheese factory by expanding the existing retail use into the storage and service areas in the 14,200-square-foot building, and to include some food court uses. The, I also would like to see a process that would include a more explicit plan for the, for the use, and doing that through the normal process of the, you know, normal planning process. I think the critical issues here, from my point of view, are parking and the establishment of a clear definition of the numbers that are, that are agreed to. And it's, to me, it seems like the, the calculation of the parking credits are fairly well spelled out in the zoning, in the development code. And I don't know if you have a copy of the, the letter that I sent in, but it includes a plaza building parking credit of 38 spaces, based on the 14,200 square feet. And then what would have to be agreed to is what the, the deli seating parking credit would be. And I've used a number of seats that were counted back in March of 2018. Anyway, the total parking credit works out to 60 spaces. That would have to be agreed to, too. And then the question of, could they develop onsite parking? I once did a little sketch that would show 16 spaces that are available in the back of the building by using, in that, using the space on the northwest corner that's not occupied by a building, with tandem parking for employees, and then other loading area, loading space, and additional parking behind the existing storage building. So that would, could be a add to the 60 spaces.
Sorry, Vic, you've run out of time.
Oh, okay, fine. Well, you have the, my letter and comments there. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if, if Mr. Conforti still had some other things, I could perhaps raise the question that he might be able to answer. In the 2004 permit, thank you for your correspondence, too, by the way. We saw that today. In the 2004 permit, Mr. Goodison reported to your commission that the parking associated with the conversion and the remodel was the recipient of the 1 to 300 number that you've used in the past. And so that basically expunged any off-street parking required for that particular use. The basis for his inaction, or, excuse me, he made a recommendation to not, to deny the expansion because of parking and the associated issues related to the easterly property along with the state property. Then the commission, recognizing that in its deliberations, according to the minutes, chose not to take any action on that recommendation of denial, and basically defer to the applicant to then come back at some point when those issues could be addressed, specifically the off-street parking. So, Vic, I'm, I'm not sure if that's where you were going.
Yes, the, the, the space that was built, built out and, and remodeled was well within the, the 1 per 300 plaza parking credit. And the additional undeveloped or storage areas that are behind the current developed cheese factory space would, could be also developed with the, with retail use, without any question, because that's one, retail is 1 per 300 square feet. So the question really is the, the food use and the parking, the increased parking that would result from seats. And so there would be a trade-off in, in developing the storage areas. How much seating was there, and how much retail space? And how do you keep those numbers such that they would, they would fit within the, the 60 spaces plus 16, I mean, 70, 16 newly created spaces, as many possibly as 76 spaces? Would accommodate some mix of retail and food use. That is the purpose of that, you know, that ordinance. It's in the parking section of the development code that defines this, the plaza credits. Now, I, I also think that all of that should be in a, in clear conditions of approval, in addition to other things that Commissioner Larry was discussing, and, and others that that would be similar to what was in the, I'll call it the Mike Ross proposal, which was a little closer to this. You know, typical conditions of approval that you would see with any project, defining their, you know, the, the maximum capacity of the restaurant, like I was mentioning, and the...
Well, just, just to be clear, Vic, the 2004 use permit only granted tenant spaces for retail use. There is no provision for a use permit for restaurant use.
Yes, yeah, the way the language is situated, yeah.
That requires an additional use permit.
Right, yeah, no, you're right. It would have to come back to this body.
So that, that's really not in play here under this discussion.
No, that's, that's why it would be helpful to make that clear, and come, they would come back, well, they would, I'd like to see them come back with a fresh application, but the, all of those things need to be nailed down, so that they're not vague. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak?
I'm a friend of the Viviani family, and I just have a comment, and that is that I believe it's the right of every citizen to be able to meet with their city council members, to discuss whatever they need to discuss. There are a city council that works for the people. And I think that by the Vivianis having met with the city council, it was recommended by the city council that they bring it back to you to get affirmation that they have the right to move forward with the project. And I don't, as a citizen, feel that the way that they are being treated, because they just followed what is their right, is fair by any means. I, I think it's kind of appalling personally. I'm upset by it, and I, I think that they have tried above and beyond, in every meeting that they've attended, to bring you what you have asked for. They brought the larger project. That met some resistance from the community. They've made changes to that project. They've listened to what people had wanted done. They made it a smaller scale to nine tenants. I, I just don't know what more people have to go through to get something approved. It, it's frustrating as just someone in the community, and I really hope that you will consider this project moving forward. I think it would be amazing for the city of Sonoma. I think it's what families who don't drink need to have something to do with their children besides a restaurant and a bar. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I didn't come here to speak about anything on this item tonight, but as a lawyer and an officer of the court, I am just flabbergasted at what I just saw displayed here. There was mention of quasi-judicial role. Yeah, you have a quasi-judicial role, and it also requires judicial temperament. It also requires not going outside the record to make a decision, not to speculate about who's making deals with who, or who might be in the background, or any of that. I'm appalled. There is a legal basis for making the request to this body that was made. The Brown Act governs who can make contact with who. You all know what the Brown Act is. There is absolutely nothing untoward, illegal, or, or in any way improper about an applicant in a land use matter going to the Board of Supervisors before it goes to the Board of Zoning Adjustments, or going to the city council before it goes to the Planning Commission. There's nothing wrong with that. If five city council members meet with the applicant, that might be an issue, but there's nothing wrong with it. And there's nothing in the law that requires you to say to an applicant, "You have to give up a right," that is, a right to defend and appeal, in order to have a matter that has a legal basis before you. So I'm not quite sure exactly what the personal attacks are about, but it doesn't have any place in this body. place in this body. And as a member of this community, I would ask that we all step back from this, count to ten, and remember what this is really about procedurally because they have a right to be here and to get the issue clarified. And if you want to deny it, deny it. They'll appeal it. That's their right.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the commission in closed public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, at this point, focus the discussion on where we are. The applicant, the, the property owner has not applied, this is not an application you're considering. They haven't applied to you for anything different, new, et cetera. They're requesting a determination by the planning commission in accordance with the municipal code that addresses specifically the question of, A, did they do enough work? And the chair accurately described the law to vest the permit, the two thousand and four permit. And two, have they subsequently abandoned those vested rights? That's based on the evidence that is in front of you, both from your previous hearing, the staff report, the file. Ultimately, the record as a whole and the testimony that you've heard here tonight and last week. That's the only thing that is in front of you at this point in time. The question of their pending application, I believe I heard the applicant's representative say that if this permit is determined to be vested and still in force and effect, that they will not be pursuing the appeal relative to, they'll abandon the previous application. Now, maybe I didn't hear that, but I thought I did. With regard to the question of what was approved, which I think is some of the trepidation here of not having the level of two thousand and eighteen clarity that we would normally see when we process a permit today from the two thousand and four permit because that wasn't, and I, I'm not trying to beat up on past staff, but that just kind of wasn't the way that necessarily permits were processed in two thousand and four with that complete level of clarity. It may behoove the commission at this point to at least state for the record, if you proceed forward, what it is that you believe was in fact approved in two thousand and four and what wasn't. And that could, if you make a determination this evening, become part of your determination. I'm trying to find a path forward to either approval or denial that addresses what is specifically in front of you this evening. I can answer any questions that you may have.
We're open up for discussion on the commission.
Question, Veronica. The language of the two thousand and four conditions of approval says, "The existing eleven thousand four hundred and twenty square foot building shall be remodeled, converted to accommodate retail use in conformance with the project narrative and approved site plan, except as modified by these conditions and the following." Am I correct in interpreting the phrase accommodate retail use as meaning that there can be no additional restaurant uses in this building?
If additional, you mean in addition to what existed on the date that the permit was granted?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that's what it means.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have some comments. First of all, I want to recognize the history of the cheese factory and how important it's been to the town of Sonoma and that the move of the factory off the plaza to the Eighth Street location made a lot of sense, and it left you with this opportunity with this building on the plaza and what to do with it. And I understand that being an evolving process and what are you going to do with it and how are you going to do this? And you guys didn't run shopping centers, and that's all new and confusing, and, and I can understand that. And maybe if in two thousand and four you'd found a partner like Oxbow or somebody, it would have been a whole lot easier and there would have been a direct path. And I think hindsight is really, you know, twenty-twenty. We can all look back and see all the things that you should have done, could have done, wish you'd done. And I, and I'm kind of looking at this now as, okay, here we are, and how do we go forward? And what's the right solution? And one solution, one alternative is that we as a commission say, yep, you're, you're two thousand and four, you're vested, go build the shopping center. And even with that, when I worry that, as I talked about on Thursday, that you're not going to get what you want, which is a marketplace that allows coffee shops, food, et cetera, cafes. So that worries me, even if we were to go down to saying, yes, you're vested, but you're so limited in what this use permit really allows you to do. Another alternative, alternative is for us to use this use permit that you've got and kind of work backwards and say, you know, it wasn't abandoned, we'll say that, it wasn't abandoned, you, your, your permit, we, we could go back and we could fix it and we could put together some new approval conditions to try and help make sure that the community is happy, that you guys have clear understanding what you're doing. Even if we do that, we're, we're kind of like recreating what's already kind of here and messy. And I want to figure out how we could do that. And then the third is the alternative of just going forward with a new, clean, transparent application that says, here's what we're going to do, here's how we're going to do it, here's who we're doing it with, and here's what it's going to look like. So I'm just looking at those three and feeling like I want to keep it as clean and as fast and as expeditious for you guys as we can. I think what we owe you is a fast process. And I worry that we're going to get bogged down in a quagmire if we try and work backwards here. I just feel like that's probably the worst choice is to drag you into this backwards thing where we say, there's going to be a lot of conditions to this approval, one of which is removing the application that is right now at appeal to city council. So that's kind of what I'm thinking. I want to hear from my other commissioners what, what their thoughts are. We, we want to make this work for the Viviani family, for the Sonoma Cheese Factory, and for whoever else takes it on in the future. We know that it doesn't have to be obligated to stay with you, and it very well may not, and we recognize that. The application and the permit, the use permit would go with the building, not with the owners, so we get that. But let's just figure out, have some dialogue and figure out what's the cleanest way for us to help this happen quickly.
I'd like to recognize that the information that was brought forth this evening was, as was requested last Thursday. However, for my own sensibilities in terms of how I was saying things, I felt comfortable on Thursday to say that I know enough about construction and I know enough that construction rarely goes straight, particularly when you're talking about an existing building, that they had, based upon verbal testimony, that they had demonstrated enough that they had indeed vested the use permit. Now, with the exhibits they brought this evening by some local contractors, Peterson Mechanical, Wason Elect, I mean Voltaire Electric with John Wason, kind of reinforces the fact that they did take steps. It's quite clear to me that things have not exactly evolved how the patriarch had kind of hoped it was going to evolve. It is, it, it has been an unclear and somewhat confusing process. And yet, when I stay focused on what the request is, and that is, has the applicant indeed vested the two thousand and four? I'm but one vote, but I would say yes. I would like to see this project go forward, and I would like to see it probably go forward with a spirit of transparency as was, as, as has been suggested by the applicant on several occasions. And that is to keep us apprised of where you're going with this use permit. It is not as comprehensive of conditions of approval as we typically see now, but that was then and that was granted then. And I do not feel that we are obligated to complicate the process based upon a decision that a different commission made back in two thousand and four. I do not believe that I'm naive, and I do not believe that I'm abdicating my responsibilities as a commissioner, but I do believe that this project can go forward in a positive way, that it can hopefully reach some sense of satisfaction on the part of the, of the Viviani family and vision that the patriarch had, but also do it in a way that the city of Sonoma will be proud and that it will indeed be something that again will be re-energized. We have an incredible public space that's surrounded by a limited number of, of businesses. And the cheese factory is one that is probably in one of the most prominent locations on all four blocks. And there's no one else that would rather see a successful business there than myself. I was part of the earlier reviews with the more larger, more complex, more dramatic, et cetera. And again, I am not looking at that particular project. What I am commenting on again is what I believe what we've been asked to do, and that is to simply say, do we believe that the use permit of two thousand and four has, has been vested based upon the construction, the sporadic and piecemeal construction that has transpired in the last fifteen years? And I would say it has.
Well, I wanted to thank the, the property owners for bringing in all the building permits and helping us flesh through that and taking the time to listen to the public staff and the commissioners. And I know that at the end of the day, everybody's heart is in the right place. My heart is in making sure that this space, which is probably the most prominent location on the plaza, is, is utilized as best as it can. It's, it's, it's like a missing tooth right now on the plaza. It really needs, we really need to get an orthodontist in here to, to, to fill that gap. And so I want you to know, that's my goal as a commissioner. And if, again, if this use permit in two thousand and four were coming in today, bar maybe some additional details, I would be wholeheartedly supportive of it. But, and not to reiterate what Commissioner O'Neill said, I think that the space deserves even more, more than just retail space. And I think that if we were to really sit down heart to heart, that's your goal too, is to do something even more special than a retail space. And I think our commission would like to give you the tools to do that. What's being asked of the commission and asked of me as a commissioner is to determine whether or not there's been enough substantial work to make me feel that the use permit for a shopping center has been fulfilled onsite. I've looked specifically, I've been taking a very narrow look at what the definition of a shopping center is, the number of uses that a shopping center entails, at least under our zoning code. I've looked at the building permits that you've submitted and the testimony that we received and all the correspondence. And I'm still not compelled as a commissioner to make the determination that substantial work has been done to fulfill the construction of the vision of the shopping center and the retail center that was approved back in two thousand and four. Both the exterior changes, landscaping, a central corridor that starts from the plaza and ends in a parking lot to link the space up to common parking. Substantial work to increase occupancy and capacity, to create the multiple exits that were envisioned and entrances as part of the original plan. And we've had, yet to in fifteen years, see that vision be created. I tried to take a look at it as a, looking at developing out an existing retail use and utilizing as much space as possible to, to create the, the, the original use, which was the, the cheese factory and its retail component. But then again, I look at what the definition of a shopping center is, what an attorney might look at as what is a, a shopping center, look at the definition, the industrial standards of what a shopping center is. And that would be some sort of main tenant possibly and some anchor tenants, multiple leases of the land. Right now, we have one single tenant, and that's the, the property owner's cheese factory. And, and I just don't see that progression in the past fifteen years to even suggest other than obtaining building permits to improve and enhance the existing use. So I'll leave it at that, and I guess we'll have to make a decision under the second part of our public hearing as to whether or not we would approve a resolution.
Well, I, I agree with the comments of, my brain is not working so good at the moment, Commissioner McDonald and, and Commissioner O'Neill as well. I would like to take a step back on this thing and, but I honestly don't know how to do it. It's something that the applicant has to initiate in a voluntary way. It's not up to this commission to dictate a new set of conditions of approval. It's not up to this commission to require that a fresh project application be made. It's really up to the applicant to decide whether or not there is the confidence that those of us sitting here are committed to creating a really wonderful project. Now, Mr. Carlin, in my opinion, actually creates pretty wonderful projects. What he's done at Oxbow, what he's done at the Ferry Building is remarkable. A lot of it is food stalls and tea courts, and down in the Ferry Building, there's the tea court, there's an ice cream place, there's food markets, there's many restaurants. In Oxbow, it's much the same. He's not going to be able to do that here under this two thousand and four permit. You're going to have one restaurant space, as Sheila has noted, and the rest of it's going to be kitchenware and sweatshirts or whatever. It's not going to be a market hall with food. And if that's what you envision, we've got to come together in some way and fashion in a, as best we can, as this body, a collaborative approach. As I said, none, not, nobody up here is against the idea of improving this site and seeing even the market hall concept fleshed out. I don't think that's what a shopping center is, and certainly restricting eight out of the nine tenants to retail uses isn't going to create a market hall. And so there's something about this, as Sheila noted, that requires an innovation that I don't know if we've ever come up against before. If I'm forced tonight through a vote to decide whether or not the, the work on the building has been in furtherance of a multi-tenant shopping center retail use, I would have to say no. But that doesn't solve the essential problem, which is how do we end up with a great project that everybody likes, that works for the Viviani family, that satisfies the intentions of Mr. Carlin and uses the best of his experience and talents and, and satisfies all of the many questions... questions that have to be resolved for a project as big and complex as this. If it's as successful as his other projects, there's going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic. One of the things I added to my list of miscellaneous conditions of approval is, for example, a pedestrian safety plan and talking about the reality of the number of people maybe crossing the street. These are all the little pieces that I don't think are going to be, and to me, aren't controversial. They're just part of what is required to serve the needs of the community safely. And so I, you know, I guess in part, I would, I would, if we did continuous tonight, it's for me not about whether or not you drop the appeal, the rest, that's up to you. It's that, you know, is there some approach that staff can help us develop that brings us all to a common space and a table in which we can basically have an open conversation about how this thing looks and what it's really going to be and how it serves everyone's purposes best? I don't know if anything like that really happens at the planning commission level because I can't remember a situation like this before that's had so much vagueness to it. But that's what I would like, and I apologize for being passionate and getting excited, and it's my nature, and I'm sorry about that. But I completely agree with Sheila, and I, maybe my hopes in staff are overstated, but I'd like to think there's some way of doing this. We have to do it in public because that's the way the process works at this level. But I'd just love to come up with one of those methodologies that lets us all come out of this feeling great, because that's what I think everybody wants.
I voted in favor of the use permit in two thousand and eighteen. I stated at that time that I felt that it was perhaps too ambitious a project, but I was, and we had promises from staff that we had an imminent hope, at least, of a solution to the parking with the state property. And so with some reluctance to the fact that I thought it was a little bit too big, and I was more concerned with having the Cheese Factory thrive and survive to be a continuing anchor to the plaza. It's very difficult for me to be opposed to the plans that you talk about wanting to do now because you're taking into account community sentiment and you're willing to scale back. But it's also very difficult for me to not have you come forward with a very clear picture of how you want to proceed by holding back another ace in the hole in case an appeal gets denied and you have a different project to go ahead with. And I really, you know, I share a lot of the sentiments of everybody up here that we want you to succeed. We want you to have a good project. We want the Cheese Factory to continue. But I wish that we could be very transparent and very open with how we do proceed so that we see the project, we say that's the right project, let's go ahead with it. And like Commissioner Barnett's saying, this, I don't believe in the nine and a half years or so that I've served on the planning commission that I've ever come across a situation like this. And it's an awkward position for us to be in. I would like to think that you have the vested right to go ahead with the two thousand and four permit. To me, it comes down to, did you demonstrate substantial investment both in work and liabilities for the permit that was granted then? And I question whether there was really any significant work towards a shopping center or a multi-tenant development at that point. It was fixing up the building, remodeling the building to make even a single-use tenant modernized to a more acceptable situation. So that's a struggle for me. So it's a question of whether, do you really have a vested right? And if you do, is that the vested right you want? And I agree with some of my other commissioners that I don't think it's what you want. And I don't want us to get into a position where we would say, oh yeah, you've got a vested right, so go for it. And then have you come back in six months and say, you know, we realize that we really need a restaurant as another tenant. And then, oh, but, you know, we didn't think of that at the time, and now we see that that's the way forward. And then we're going to be put in that position of saying, well, why didn't you tell us that six months ago? And so it's a difficult thing for me to go. And quite frankly, I'm in a position now where I don't know at this point in my mind how I would vote on any motion that's put forward by this body tonight. I would have to hear exactly the words of that motion. I would have to see the acceptance or denial of the rest of the commission on this point. I wish we had seven commissioners up here to make it a more diverse set of opinions. But I'm really, at this point, struggling to the point that I am willing to stay neutral until the very last moment, and then I will have to make a decision. So unless somebody wants to add more to my comments, if somebody feels that they can craft a motion, we'll put it on the table and see what happens.
Through the chair, do we have to close four point one? And do we feel we have enough substantial information submitted to the applicant? Because I think that's the next thing we need to close four and go to five point two. I didn't think we ever left four point. Oh, we did? Okay, sorry, never mind.
I've got a question. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. I mean, do you see a path through this other than approval or denial of the request that brings everybody to the table here to try to craft a solution? Is it another continuance to make that genuine offer to the applicants? Is there some forum that can be put together that allows that to happen? Is it a study session? Or, I don't know, I'm out of ideas.
My only comment, and I'll leave it to Ron to finish it off, and that is, you could continue to get an op. number if that's where the chair was thinking. But you may take a straw poll before, you may not need that extra person if you do a quick discussion.
So I think there's, seems to me there's a couple of interests here that are, I think, trying to be served by the commission if I heard sort of the majority concern about this issue. And one of them that I think, and commissioners should correct me if I'm wrong, is giving some, there's two pieces of it, I think, that are giving some consternation to the commission. The first is a set of conditions and sort of the what was approved, a determination as to what was approved in two thousand and four that you seem uncomfortable with for a variety of reasons, including that it's sort of this weird combination of a proposal statement incorporated into conditions of approval where the proposal statement is sort of a narrative as opposed to what you would normally see as conditions. I think the second issue is one of what didn't get approved in two thousand and four and a feeling that perhaps a better use of the property would be something else. I think the latter one's easier to address. As respects a question of any, I'm going to use shopping mall, either something's allowed and it's a permitted use by the code once the shopping mall is built, or it's not allowed and it can never be there unless the code is changed, or it's a conditionally permitted use that would have to come back when a tenant comes in to occupy the space for a CUP. Relative to the uses that you have discussed here today, what is clearly allowed by the use permit, assuming it's vested and still in effect, which is what's in front of you, is retail uses and the amount of, I'll call it, anchor tenant delicatessen space that was approved, you asked this question, Commissioner Barnett, that was approved in two thousand and four. We know that's what is allowed by this permit. We also know that there are other uses that are arguably contemplated or hoped for, but have yet to have been applied for, meaning restaurant or other uses that are conditionally permitted uses in the code today, where the tenant would have to come and seek a use permit for occupancy of that tenant's space. That's really not a whole lot different than occupancy of any other shopping mall. A tenant will come in and say, I want to be in space A, and I am a conditionally permitted use, and so I'm applying for a restaurant. And either they still have capacity for a number of seats or they don't, either they still have the right amount of parking or they don't, and all of those go into the question of whether you grant that subsequent use permit to the tenant. So I think that piece is a little easier than the first piece. How do we describe what was granted in a way that satisfies the commission, that everyone's clear going forward? So if you're looking sort of for a path forward, if in fact you determine, all right, you did enough work, you've expressed to us that you never intended to abandon this permit, that you intended to go forward incrementally, and we believe those statements, and we believe the permits that are in front of us show enough work and substantial reliance on the permit that was granted to say, all right, there was a vesting and there was no abandonment, then the only path forward from there that I can think of that does sort of clarification is a determination by the planning commission that essentially clarifies what was approved in two thousand and four. And goes through the narrative, describes what the narrative did and didn't approve, adopts or approves, re-references the conditions of approval, and then has some discussion about what they would have to do to occupy tenant's spaces within the building based on the current code. I think that's the best you could do to get from here to there in this step.
Okay, I appreciate that. Does that eliminate the opportunity for any other kind of step? Which is, as I say, which would require the applicant to essentially come forward and say, yeah, I'd be happy to sit down and talk about what we envision and how we would like to flesh it out. It might include their partner, Mr. Carlin, who could talk about what ideas they have. In other words, actually get a sense of what the reality is that the applicant wants to have there and what it is that this commission, you know, can determine about the public good that that would serve. And is there any opportunity for that kind of forum, or is that just simply outside of the venue of this body?
I don't think that a discussion is outside the venue of the body. I'm a little bit concerned about the context of that discussion. I mean, relative to having it sort of sit down roundtable, no, that's got Brown Act problems, obviously. I think to the extent that it's relevant to the question of what is the current use permit, what are the uses that are allowed under the current use permit, is or isn't it, you know, still alive, I'll use those words, as opposed to expired or abandoned. Some of what you're talking about isn't particularly addressed to that. It's sort of this question of, well, what might you want to do next, right? What might a future partner or current partner or any subsequent tenants might want to do? And I think those are relevant and good questions, but I don't know how relevant they are to the question of, is the permit they currently have vested and has enough work been done to establish that and have those vested rights been abandoned? But I think if the applicant is willing to have that conversation, then I think you can have that conversation here as part of this hearing or subsequent to this hearing, and you can make a decision. And whichever way it goes, the applicant can have the opportunity to talk to you about, hey, here's where we might want to go in the future. Because what I'm hearing is this question of, well, okay, is there some other step after this step? I think that's what you're getting at, is you're uncomfortable not knowing what the next phase of this development would entail. I can't speak to the applicant's willingness to sort of outline what future plans there may or may not be. I don't even know if they know whether they have future plans yet or not. I can't speak to those issues.
Well, let me ask one further question. If we make a determination that they do not have the vested rights, and then that ends up going to the city council, and the city council essentially affirms our decision, where that would leave the applicant, setting aside the other appeal thing, which just take it off the table for the moment. Where that would leave the applicant then is in the position of, essentially, if the applicant wants to explore, then a project that goes beyond what is described in this matter before us, they would then essentially be having to start over, so to speak, and come forward with a new application for a nine-space shopping center or mall or market hall or whatever it is they want to conceive of, and go through the process. And so that is a conceivable outcome. Am I correct?
It is one of two outcomes. Either they would reapply for the two thousand and four permit or something similar to the two thousand and four permit, or they would file litigation to challenge the action.
Of the city council affirming the position, yes.
As to the question of vested rights, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess there's a third option, they could do nothing. That's a third option as well.
Anybody willing to attempt some kind of a motion to resolve this?
Yes, I'll try this. I don't know if I'll get a second. It's not something that I want to do. But I recommend that we deny the application, or not, we deny the request that a use permit has been validated and has been substantially vested on site. My spec- My specific reasons are as follows. To deny the substantial vesting of the tenant improvements and subsequent common areas and components to establish a multi-use retail center and shopping center for the following reasons. One, that the applicant, I mean, the owner, has not applied for, received any discretionary permits or approvals for exterior common areas or other sort of exterior changes such as landscaping, colors, fenestrations, and entrances and exits as shown on the plans, conceptual plans, as demonstrated in 2004. Two, the applicant has not established more than the original use, that being the cheese factory, retail, and deli use. Three, the applicant has not created the main structural elements of the central tenant of a shopping center or retail center, that being the common walk area and community space that links the plaza and street to the common parking area, which would be one of the more definitive things of a retail center or shopping space. And two, lastly, for the building permits have demonstrated only the improvements to the existing retail space and deli and have not substantially created capacity with respects to building permit occupancy above that of a single tenant. So...
So, before that...
Without seeing a resolution, I couldn't agree my own.
Before that motion gets close to a second. Staff did prepare a shell, I'll call it that, of a resolution addressing this issue in case the commission went in that direction. Commissioner McDonald's recitation of the facts upon which he makes his motion included, I think, three additional points that are not in the draft that is brought before you, which if the commission is, and if that motion receives a second, should be added to this resolution under, you have A and B here. I caught C, which was applicants have not established the additional uses essentially, although Commissioner McDonald said it more eloquently than I just did. And then there were, I think, two and maybe three additional that I did not capture because I can't write that fast and I realized that you had already written them down.
I wrote it down, so if you want me to, I can repeat it one more time. Or you won't be able to read it.
Just making it part of the record, I think.
I think if, in fact, you get a second or maybe we could request that you reformulate the motion to be approval of this resolution with the findings as you had described under one and then add C, D, and E below what is already here in front of you. And then if that gets a second, we can take from the record to comprise the remainder of the resolution.
Okay, so I'd like to withdraw my original, I guess, motion and reinstate it with the resolution before us, a resolution relating to the expiration of the use permit for the previously approved Sonoma Cheese Factory Development Project located at 2 Spain Street that was approved on May 13, 2004 by the planning commission and finding as established under this draft resolution with the additional amendments to deny, which include, one, that the vested tenant improvements have not demonstrate a substantial vested right in a multi-use retail center and shopping center for the following reasons. One, the owner has not applied for, received, or submitted any discretionary permits for the exterior common areas and improvements that were originally envisioned in 2004, i.e. landscaping, exterior changes to the buildings, additional entrances and exits as shown on the plans. Two, the applicant has not established more than the original use, that being the cheese factory, retail, and deli store. Three, the applicant has not created, has not created the main structural element of what would be defined as a retail center, shopping center, that being the common walk area between the plaza and the common parking area behind it. And lastly, that the building permits and the record have not demonstrated the intent to build a multi-use shopping center or retail space in that it did not create substantially more capacity for additional people above and beyond the original use, that being the cheese factory, deli, and retail outlet.
And Mr. Chair, if I can, just add, those were to add to the therefore be it further resolve 1A, so that would be the introduction of C, D, and E accordingly?
That would be correct, yes.
Well, for the purposes of discussion, I'll second it. This discussion?
Yes.
I guess that I'm forced to conclude unless, and I don't know if it's appropriate to direct a question to the applicant at this point or not. Is that in order?
I think you would have to reopen the hearing in the middle of the motion, so I'm not sure that's appropriate, but...
Well, let me say this, that I would move instead, I'm not making this motion, I would move instead for a continuance if I felt there was some path open to bringing the parties together and hammering out some kind of workable solution. But at this point, I'm not getting the message either from city staff that that tool is readily available, nor have I seen from the applicant in its comments that they feel, and that's why I would love to be able to ask but can't, whether a continuance at this point for that purpose would be of value.
If the city attorney would think that it's at least permissible to reopen the public hearing, I would be happy to reopen the public hearing just to try to settle the matter.
So procedurally, at this point, in order to address that issue, I think if the maker of the original motion and the maker of the second withdraw those for that purpose and then you reopen the hearing for the purposes of response, then you can go back to remaking the motion and, no, you don't have to state that whole thing again. You can just say, I remake my original motion.
Would you two be willing to do that?
Of course.
Yes.
All right, they have withdrawn the motion and the second and we will reopen the public hearing and if, who would you like to have step forward? Commissioner Barnett?
Whichever they so choose. My question really is quite simple. Would a continuance at this point be of any value in crafting a resolution on this? I mean, when I say resolution, I don't mean a formal resolution, I'm talking about a solution.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. I think at this point, my poor client has been through so much just trying to ask a simple question that unfortunately there isn't any value in continuing this. We're going to be right back having the same conversation, I fear. So with all due respect, no.
Okay, I'm just looking for that honest answer, so...
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion, so if you could play back the tape. That's the motion.
And I will second the motion previously made.
Is there any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Wellander.
No.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner Larry Barnett.
Yes.
Chair Felder.
Yes.
The motion passes four to one.
Mr. Chair, as a follow-up item to that, there would be an appeal, obviously, of your action tonight that would expire in 15 days. And so at that point, should there be an appeal, let's say, for example, on the 15th day, I would then need time to advertise that at some point to the future for the city council. And of course, that requires a 20-day minimum posting, so we're looking at somewhere in a month or two from now that this could be serviced to the council.
Okay, let's continue on. Item seven, are there any issues updates from the planning director? Any issues update?
No, Mr. Chair, I can just say that Christine is still in the process of getting together your APA memberships that now that we have a commission that we know is going to be around for at least a couple of years, we can do that. We're looking at the expenses for doing eight memberships and also getting three of you that have expressed an interest in going to the APA National Conference. If there's additional desire, we can try to figure out if that works into our budget or not. But so far, we have Chair Felder, Vice Chair Wellander, and Commissioner Kelso Barnett that's expressed an interest so far.
Thank you.
But expressing an interest as well.
Based on your motion tonight, you're not allowed to go to the conference. We can certainly, I'm just teasing, by the way, we can certainly look into that, Bob, and we'll look at your availability if we talk after the meeting.
Are there any further comments from the commission? Yes. Okay. I know that we have an anticipated work session on the Brown Act, I believe of some sort down the road. What I feel would be equal, if not of greater value, is to have an updated primer on SEQA. I think that at least I can speak for myself that I would find of value going forward. May I speak to that? I think in having a discussion with the planning director, we decided that we had planning commissioner training a little over a year ago for three of us and two of the other members, new members of the planning commission have served the city in a number of ways prior to being appointed to this commission and probably wouldn't need that training unless they desired it. So that left Commissioner O'Neill, who is brand new, and we were going to take the approach to do a one-on-one training with you to discuss whatever you felt you needed to know about being a good commissioner, so...
I would love that.
So we would schedule that between myself and the planning director and perhaps some legal cooperation.
Yeah, if I can just address that for a moment because the city clerk was going to do some training with the other commissions that was canceled. And so we were going to actually dovetail this commission, as has happened in the past. I think you did it at the end of a December, the end of a year before your new commission sat. And so with one new commission, we thought, well, maybe that was the best use of the commission's time was to do that on a one-on-one. And unfortunately, I hadn't had the chance to talk to Veronica about that because I think Jeff usually does that with the other commissions, I thought.
It's been multiple different ways over the course of many years, so I can't speak to what the plan was.
But I mean, we devoted a whole meeting a year ago December for planning commission training and I think that most members would not need a repeat of that.
Unless it's a refresher for Commissioner Larry Barnett and Mr. Barbosa. Then we could actually dovetail it with Sheila's, perhaps.
So I would leave it up to you as to whether you need a refresher.
Has the law changed?
Well, it depends on which law we're talking about. Relative to the Brown Act, not really. Relative to SEQA, which was what Commissioner Wellander was speaking of, yes.
SEQA would be interesting to me.
But I think we could all, I don't think we had much training on SEQA. I think we could all use that one.
Okay, so why don't we, staff, kind of look on a go-forward basis and kind of see what kind of time is available and put together a presentation as the commission may or may not know. There were a significant number of guideline changes that just came out, whatever it was, like 60 days ago. So those are, some of them will be of interest to the commission. So staff can work on that and then give you a report back on when that might be, when might be some available time to sort of go through those with the commission, have some discussion, let you guys ask some questions, et cetera. So we'll come back to you.
We previously agreed to try to agendize a discussion on the plan going forward on general plan and development code. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think we could probably do that.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make one more comment. I wanted to wish David a happy belated birthday. It's his milestone birthday for him and he snuck it by us.
No cake.
No cake?
No cake.
No cookies?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Move to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor?
Last Thursday.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, none.